We are now live. Good evening, Santa Rosa City, Santa Rosa City Schools. This is the December 8th, 2021 School Board Meeting, Santa Rosa City School District, and we are going to begin with our territorial land acknowledgement. I want to introduce our speaker tonight. While we are bringing that person over to the panel, tonight's land acknowledgement is offered by our Pioneer student Aubrey Cordova. She is a member of the Dry Creek Pomo Tribe, and she has honored her family's traditions by singing and dancing at big times in strawberry festivals. She's a student in the Early College Magnet Program at Pioneer High School and is dual enrolled at the Santa Rosa J.C., and she will be graduating this December. She's graduating early due to her enrollment in the Early College Magnet Program. So, we welcome Aubrey, and are you here with us? There you are. Thank you so much. We're going to stand for this, everyone. Aubrey, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I would like to thank the board for inviting me here tonight to acknowledge the land that we're gathering on today. I'm grateful to know that the land of my ancestors, elders, and family is now being honored and respected on their behalf. We reside on the land that is currently historically inhabited and home to Pomo, Wapo, and Coast Niwok tribes. It is important to note that simply mentioning their presence is not all that we should be doing. It is also our job to take care of and honor this land like my ancestors have. If it weren't for their efforts and practices, this land would not be the land that it is today. With that being said, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my ancestors and honor the land itself. Thank you again.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. We are now going to say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. I'm going to take a second here just to give us a grounding in the spirit of our holiday season, in the spirit of closing out our calendar year soon, in the spirit of the incredible tensions and challenges of 2021, and in the strong spirit of our human spirit, the human tenacity, care, compassion, and desire to connect with one another. This is acknowledgement that compassion goes a really long way, that we appreciate each other's gifts, and we build upon each one, that we use our communication and alerts to help spot gaps in our systems, and that while we cannot control everything, we can control ourselves, and we can directly and positively affect those around us. Thank you. We are on C3. This is reported actions taken in closed session by the board. The board has approved the student expulsions, case numbers 21/21/22-08. We have approved case number 21/22-09, and we have approved case 21/22-11. Item C4, there are no items considered in closed session for action in open session. Board, are there any statements of abstention? Tonight, I see none. Are there any, Board, are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? Okay, again, I see none. And Beth, would you please ask the public if there's anyone who'd like to comment on consent items tonight?
Thank you. So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on items in the F section of the agenda, those are the consent items. We need to pull those items now for comment later in the meeting. So if there is something in the F section that you would like to comment on later in the meeting, usually toward the end of the meeting, please raise your hand at this time, and then we're going to ask which item it is so that it can be pulled, but the comment will come later. And Katie Thomas has a hand raised.
This is the public comment, correct?
No, it is not. That's coming up next.
Sorry about that.
No worries. All right, it looks like we have no other hands raised.
Thank you, Beth. So no adjustments to the agenda that was C6. We are now on C7. This is time for public comment on non-agenda items, and Beth, I will let you take that over again.
Well, here we are again. If there are members of the public who would like to comment on items that are not on our agenda tonight, this is the time to do it. So that means items that are not going to be coming up later in the meeting, please raise your hand. And here is Katie Thomas.
Hello. My name is Katie Thomas. I'm a student at Montgomery High School. This year, I've become concerned about the school's safety, and many factors play a part in this. For example,
Katie, I am so sorry. That was an accident, and we're going to bring you back into the meeting. You'll be allowed to talk, and you have two minutes for your comment. We have a timer on there to help you keep time. Sorry about that.
Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Katie Thomas. I'm a student at Montgomery High School. This year, I've become concerned about the school's safety, and many factors play a part in this. For example, our lack of substitutes in the district. This forces the principal, vice principal, or assistant principal to come in and supervise when the teacher has to be absent. This means that they can't do their jobs, one of which is supervising the campus and ensuring the safety of the students and staff. Another event that worried me was the armed student on our school last Friday, and the fact that there was no school resource officer on campus to take care of this issue calmly and quickly, and faster than an officer from the SRPV could get there. The response time was probably several minutes, whereas an SRO could have responded in just seconds. This was several minutes longer that a gun was on campus, and several minutes longer that the student could have felt threatened and pulled it out to hurt someone. I'm not comfortable with that. Thankfully, this issue was resolved, and no one was hurt, but it could have been handled faster if we had an SRO. Even today, there was a fight on campus between two students. Multiple teachers had to break up the fight, which put them in danger since they are not trained in combat or self-defense. If there was an SRO, they could have stopped the fight in less time since they are trained in self-defense, and that would have minimized the potential danger for people to get hurt. I thought it was important to speak tonight so that you could hear the voices of the students on campus. It's my life and my friends' lives that could potentially be at risk. Please make the decisions that will protect us. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, and I just want to say that President Bong has said that we have three minutes for each public comment. It looks like Katie didn't even use her two minutes, but everyone else, the clock should say three minutes. And next is Samwise K., and if you could please state your full name for the record.
My full name is Samwise Keisig.
Thank you.
Does my time start now? Oh. Okay, my name is Samwise Keisig. I'm a student at Santa Rosa High School. And an issue that I think is, it's kind of scary to me, is recently there was a rumor going around at my school that a student was going to do a school shooting over there. And I'm not really, like, I'm not really satisfied with how it was handled because instead of like making students aware and possibly letting them make their own choices of how they want to handle the situation and possibly stay home if they, like, didn't feel comfortable going to school. There was a rumor going around that the school was even hiding it and not letting the information go out to the like students and the public until it was too late, and like even hiding it from several staff members. So that, like, there was announcement on the PA of the supposed day it was going to happen that just told teachers to check their emails. And like, everyone knew what I was talking about because information leaks, but the fact that there was an effort to hide it from people kind of just scares me. Like, is there a value on students' lives? Yeah, that's kind of all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Cheyenne. Cheyenne, could you please state your full name for the record?
Sorry about that. My name is Cheyenne Stenberg-Stolzfuss.
Thank you. And go ahead with your comment.
Okay. Okay. So yes, once again, my name is Cheyenne Stenberg-Stolzfuss, and I am the parent to a fifth grader and second grader at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. For the past six years, I have witnessed and supported my older child as she struggled and then succeeded in an immersed educational environment. Her commitment to understand the French language gave her a sense of accomplishment. This work ethic is something that she received from each teacher she has had at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. And now my second grader is eager to follow in her big sister's footsteps. We are beginning to look into middle schools and realize that we may have to leave Santa Rosa City School District for Rinkin Valley due to our address. This is not the decision we want to make. Our daughters would much rather continue their French immersion education through eighth grade, and that is what I also want for them. Tonight, I'm asking Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education to consider extending Santa Rosa French American Charter School to accommodate middle school students. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Westerman.
Hi. My name is Brittany Westerman, and I am a parent at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I chose this school for my kids because I wanted to give them the opportunity to learn another language that they wouldn't otherwise be exposed to. My kids absolutely love this school, and to see them thrive in an immersion language setting has been fantastic as a parent. I love the diversity and global perspective at the school. Our focus is to raise global citizens, and I think that that's an incredible thing to do. I would love for my children to continue the immersion setting beyond elementary. I'm asking you to reconsider reinstating the Santa Rosa French American Charter School Charter to include seventh and eighth grades. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Matthew McElveiny.
Hi, I want to thank the board for your time and your service to our community tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of three children enrolled in the French American School, so common theme here. I personally came from the middle of America, growing up in public schools. It had very limited diversity in that training, limited exposure to a truly worldview. I wanted to let you know, I was really impressed that I found a multicultural opportunity like the French American School as a public charter school here in Santa Rosa. My three children have thrived in that environment. I've seen them grow into children that have a truly worldview with the diversity exposure that they've received. I think it would be a very difficult transition for them going right into middle school. We know that that's a very sensitive time in our children's lives and socially stressful. If we were able to find a way to maintain some continuity and reinstate the charter to continue their multilingual education into middle school, I think it would be an excellent service to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And once again, this is public comment on non-agenda items. Next is Melissa Liu.
Hi, yes, this is Melissa. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Melissa Liu, and I've had a child attending Santa Rosa French American Charter School since 2014. We have been happy with the curriculum that integrates both common core requirements in English and math, while also teaching the language, culture, and customs of France per their requirements at the French Ministry of Education. Another part of the reason we chose to attend SRFAX at that time was a continuity of a K-8 curriculum. We were disappointed when the seventh and eighth grade program was discontinued due to space constraints on the existing campus. My son graduated in June, and we were unable to find a middle school in the district for him to continue his immersion experience. We asked for Santa Rosa City Schools to resume seventh and eighth grade programs under SRFAX in the hope that our daughter would stay within the district and build on her language immersion and potential IB certificate. She loves school, she loves her teachers, and her community at SRFAX, as did our son. Please know that we are supportive and extremely grateful for the opportunity of a French immersion middle school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. So, a couple comments ago, I heard a young man talk about the fact that the staff at his school decided to handle an issue by withholding information from the faculty and the students. I constantly call in every meeting you have at this point, trying to figure out why you guys are withholding information about COVID. But how these two things correlate to me is this. If you're faithful in one thing that's small, you're faithful in one thing that's great, which means that you individuals tend to do something small, and it affects something bigger. It's interesting to me that this young man feels slighted by you guys, and he's actually witnessing this in real time. And there's a distrust in the way that the faculty is handling situations. So if you're doing that in one area, you're probably doing it in all the areas. I don't know if you're aware that the federal government has issued a stay on all vaccine mandates. You guys have way bigger problems and priorities to be worrying about, like children getting shot at school versus individuals being vaccinated. This is things that are a big problem for me. If you're willing to withhold from these children vital information that protects their well-being, you're doing it in every area possible that you can. So you guys need to really get your heads out of wherever you have them and realize that you have bigger problems that are going on in your district now, presently. If one child came to school saying that they had a gun, and nothing was done to alert the people and get people off of the campus, you guys are unable to do your job. If my child were to be harmed in this situation, how would you handle it? It's disgusting to think that a child has to call in and make you do your job, and make you think about the priorities that you have to them and your obligations. You have a lot of things that you do good, but in your doing good, you are overemphasizing the things that do not matter in your everyday lives. Keeping our children safe is the number one priority of every individual on this board. And I'm looking at each one of you. I think it is ridiculous that we are still in the same place. If you mandate these children to do certain things, and you're lying to them in other areas, you need to stick your noses into the priorities and not into the things that are not important to you. And if they are important to you, maybe you should recalibrate the things that you are doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Karen Wagner. Karen, are you there? All right, we are going to move on to Deanna Olivares.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I have a few things. So I applaud the young high school kids that called regarding the gun on Montgomery's campus, and I just wish that our board members, our elected officials that sit on this board would do what they say they're doing, which is try to keep our kids safe. Because this last two years, after this whole George Floyd thing, and the board members decided they wanted to be social justice warriors, they decided that our SROs are intimidating. And as Omar Medina said months ago in one of the meetings, do you feel safe with a police officer on campus? And this agenda that you keep trying to make it seem like you guys are worried about our kids' safety, more accidents have been happening at schools in this county that require SROs being on campus. And for an example, Rinkin Valley Middle School, where two of my children go, I go there to drop off something for my child, their office door's locked because the staff inside, they're scared that apparently I have COVID. They lock the door, I knock. This has happened to multiple parents that I've talked to. Nobody comes to see me, so I start wandering around campus. So I am a parent wandering around campus. What if I had a gun? And finally, I ran into somebody. This happens all the time. And when they do come to the door, a mask is shoved in my face, and I don't want to put it on because I'm outside. I'm not allowed to go in the office. But yet, when our kids are in the quad eating or having break, if a gunman was to come onto the campus, those administrators in that office, they'd be safe, right? Because they're in a locked room. But when children were trying to maybe run for safety, they'd be killed. And so I think instead of being social justice warriors, you guys really need to think what is happening on campus, and how you all visit schools, and Anna Tredell, you visit these campuses. Instead of going around and saying, oh, the kids look so happy, why don't you talk to the parents? Because we're not allowed at campus, we're not allowed at meetings. We have a few minutes if we're lucky. And so that brings me to another thing. Cell phones aren't allowed on campus. Ryan Thompson, the vice principal of our school, goes around and confiscates cell phones out of back pockets that aren't even being used. I want my kid to have a cellphone. If there's an emergency or a gunman on campus, I want to know where my kid is because I track them via app. And so this brings me to another thing. This is a nonpartisan movement. School choice needs to be on the ballot for November 22. And I'm leading the effort in Sonoma County. My name is Deanna Olivares. Find me on Facebook, and please sign my petition. It's the only way we can battle the unions.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Adrian Juarez, and I believe that we have someone who's going to come over and translate for Mr. Juarez. Mr. Juarez, are you there? Adrian Juarez?
Señor Juarez, ¿está usted presente? Señor Juarez, ¿está usted presente?
Well, Gabriela, perhaps he'll raise his hand again. That could have been a hand raised in error. Thank you for coming over.
Sure. If he needs to come off mute on a cellphone on Zoom, you have to press star six.
I don't believe that he called in because we could see his name. So meanwhile, let's go to Anastasio. Anastasio, could you please state your full name for the record?
Hello, my name is Anastasio Tolari Rose. And I hear goodbye for this French American School. I would like for the French American parents to consider maybe moving their kids into our seventh and eighth grade program that we have as a Travis Language Academy. I mean, it stated in our name that we're a language academy, so we should offer French there. And then the school district should also work on furthering our education for our Spanish-speaking students as a Travis Language Academy and our French students into a high school, and I would suggest that the school district also look into Alsea Island to become a language high school. So that's something that the school district should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Piper Buchigani Paris. And Piper needs to be promoted into the panel to be able to speak, so we're going to do that. Piper, are you there?
Hi, can you hear?
We can hear you. If there's any way you could speak closer to the mic, I think that would help. Are you there, Piper? Well, unfortunately, now we cannot hear you.
Are you guys able to hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Piper Bookinyani Paris. I am a senior at Santa Rosa High School. I am concerned about the lack of safety drills at my school. As we are approaching the end of the first semester of school, Santa Rosa High School has yet to administer a lockdown drill. There are many new students whose first year on campus is this year and who have no idea of the safety protocols for a lockdown at Santa Rosa High School. Given everything going on in the news recently and the recent gun threats within the Santa Rosa City Schools District last week, it is important that students and staff have a plan in case of an emergency. I am asking the board to prioritize safety drills and protocols in schools by administering safety drills within the first weeks of school to guarantee the safety of students in case of an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam Karbowski.
Good evening. My name is Pam Karbowski, and I am a PE teacher at Brookville and Viella Elementaries. I just have four simple points that I would like to make this evening. Number one, bring back SROs. Take the advice of the committee that recommended keeping them last summer. Why are we even having a committee if we aren't even going to listen to them? Number two, we need more substitutes. We need to make the desire of subbing in our district be more inviting. Number three, please be honest, upfront, and forthcoming with information that has to do with safety. We as teachers need the information to do our job and keep our students safe. And lastly, number four, we need to pay our classified staff a living wage. We are lacking employees, and it is affecting our students, their learning, and their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, this is public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening, and Sheila Walker is next.
Hi, good evening, President Bong and Board of Trustees and the community. I'm a parent with a student in eighth grade in this district, and I want to just add my thoughts as well regarding the safety of our students. Do we know if our students are all right? Do we know if our children are right? We are near the middle of the year. I also believe that the board should consider reporting back to us, the community, and the parents about progress regarding attendance, academics, the social-emotional well-being of our children, about discipline issues. A transparent presentation would be welcomed by all of us. I also want to ask the board, how often do you talk to parents? I know you all get emails from me from time to time, and I copy you on some conversations with the district office as I did today on one subject. But I've asked many times, and I'm looking at Mr. Sheffield, Trustee Sheffield, you're my representative. I've asked to speak with you. I've asked to speak with numerous Board of Trustees to tell you my story. Why, as a parent, that I will be at every single board meeting? Why would you think I would want to be at every single board meeting? Because my kid was denied an education last year. And now, I find out that now there's more behavior issues on campuses. We've decided to put off our SROs. I guess when the board decided to remove them from our campuses, we weren't even in school, were we? Now we're in school. Have you been at the school? I had a meeting with the vice principal. It was about a behavior issue, not with my son, but he was being bullied by multiple kids at the school, at the middle school. So we had to have a meeting, and at that meeting, it was at the end of school. This is at Rinkin Valley Middle School. And while I was sitting in the meeting with my husband and my son, we're talking to the vice principal. There was a fight that broke out. The vice principal had to leave the meeting. Then the bell rang, school was over. Vice principal had to leave the meeting yet again. There's a fight right outside the door. So please revisit the SRO issue, keep our kids safe, and while we're at it, let's look at what we're looking when we have adults on our campuses, whether they're our elementary or middle school or high school. Let's make sure that we have enough adult bodies monitoring the campuses during their school breaks for lunch and their recess. I mean, I'm a creative person. I'm willing to work with anybody to help solve this issue and get creative on getting more and get creative on getting more adults on our campus. The last thing I want to add, I have a lot of friends who are educators, but I support Californians for School Choice. And if you want to join us, you can join us at Californians for School Choice, Sonoma County, and all my efforts as a Democrat will be made there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Wagner. I'm going to try Karen again.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. I had to switch to my phone. So my concern is along the lines of what I'm hearing. And I didn't really realize that everybody else is going to be talking about this, but you know, the SROs. As an employee of the school district and being on campuses, I know that we have strongly had support from the SROs. And it's helped in a lot of different areas to keep us safe. And in the last two weeks, I myself have gotten caught in the middle of two breakout fights. One, I don't know, they're pretty scary. Our admin, I mean, our, one campus supervisor that we have, we're supposed to have more, but we only have one for eighteen hundred students, so that's ridiculous. But also, you know, the admin were able to get there quicker. But it's just, it's just scary that, you know, these things happen so quick. And then today, an incident happened where somebody confided on me that there was a weapon in somebody's backpack on the bus that I was loading students on. Yes, the weapon was found. It was, you know, not a firearm or anything like that. However, it was confiscated. So I'm implying you guys, please look at our safety. Make us safe, make our students safe, make our families feel safe. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what else to say other than it's starting to get a little rambunctious out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Adrian Juarez again. We are going to see if we can hear him. Mr. Juarez?
Si me escuchan, por favor.
Mr. Juarez, un momento, por favor.
¿Me escucha señor Juarez? Buenas tardes, ¿me escucha?
Si, si le escucho. Ustedes me escuchan.
Sí, yo lo estoy escuchando, señor. Can you hear me? In the meeting? Can people hear me?
We can hear you, translator. Thank you, Gabriela.
Sure, absolutely. So let me go back to him. Señor Juarez, ¿qué necesita decirnos?
Okay, buenas noches, primeramente a miembros de la Mesa Directiva, nuestro superintendente y personal del Distrito Santa Rosa. Realmente estoy muy preocupado por muchos puntos, muchas razones que están ahorita debatiendo. Una de ellas es la seguridad en las escuelas, ¿verdad? Mi hijo atiende la Montgomery High School y recientemente, con el suceso que ha pasado la semana pasada, uno queda realmente preocupado, este, por lo que está pasando, ¿verdad?, por la seguridad. Hasta donde yo sé, no hay hoy una pelea o tal vez dos peleas. Y anteriormente ha habido, yo las he ido contando, tal vez unas cinco peleas en la escuela. Entonces pienso yo que ya es algo que tenemos que tomar cartas en el asunto. Y en todas las peleas creo que los maestros andan interviniendo, ¿verdad? Esto me da a entender que no hay suficiente personal para que cuiden a los estudiantes, ¿verdad? Entonces, no podemos estar en este punto ya definitivamente. Necesitamos trabajar, hacer algo. Vamos a medio año escolar y la escuela sin personal es algo pues muy, muy difícil. Soy como lo mencionaba anteriormente, soy presidente del grupo de DILAC. Y es otra de las razones también que me preocupa que no hay suficiente personal en algunas escuelas también, no hay suficiente personal para que se formen estos comités de DILAC en cada escuela, ¿verdad? Si bien sabemos, en nuestro distrito, casi la mitad de los estudiantes son aprendices de inglés, ¿correcto? Entonces, si no se están formando estos comités por falta de personal que están atendiendo diferentes situaciones, ¿cómo vamos a poder ayudar a nuestros estudiantes? Aprendiz del inglés también. Entonces, son muchos puntos importantes que necesitamos trabajar definitivamente. Yo no quisiera tomar mucho tiempo en esto. Creo yo que es hora de tomar decisiones y ver en qué podemos trabajar juntos. Anteriormente, se ha hecho una invitación a miembros de la Mesa Directiva, a nuestra superintendente, que pueden atender a nuestro asunto del comité de DILAC. Y trabajar juntos, ver qué podemos hacer, ¿verdad? Para que nuestros estudiantes vayan saliendo a flote en su nivel académico, en su totalidad, ¿verdad? Todos los estudiantes, no solamente nuestros aprendices del inglés. Pero sí, definitivamente necesitamos tomar cartas en el asunto en esto de la seguridad. Y anteriormente, en otros años, lo he comentado. Escuelas primarias que no tienen una cerca alrededor, que cualquier persona puede entrar y a tomar un niño de kinder, que los baños están a unos cincuenta, sesenta pies de la calle. Entonces, es algo preocupante.
Mr. Juarez, perdón, Mr. Juarez. Gabriela, would you please tell Mr. Juarez that his three minutes are up? And then perhaps you can translate what his comment was. Thank you.
Of course. Señor Juarez, el tiempo se acabó. Necesito tomar unos minutos para traducir lo que usted está comentando, si me permite. En el futuro probablemente puede usted comentar más adelante. Gracias.
Okay, so Mr. Juarez is the president of DILAC. As you may know, he is saying good evening to all. He wants to mention that he is very worried for many reasons, as everybody has been talking about the safety at schools. Specifically, his son attends Montgomery High School. And he was there when all this situation happened recently. But he's also been counting about how many fights he's learned about in the, on the campus. And he has counted so far five recently. He is asking that we need to take action, that teachers are having to scramble and interfere to break these fights. We need to have more personnel, more staff to take care of these situations. We need to do something. How is it possible that we're in the middle of the year and we still do not have enough staff? He has mentioned that he also has attempted to form committees, DILAC committees in the different schools, and there's not enough staff or people are simply not having the time or not possibly interested in forming these committees on the campuses. He's also saying that it is important that we consider that DILAC could be a good way to communicate with students, which in a significant number are English learners in the different schools in Santa Rosa. He's also saying that it is time to make decisions. He was also reminding us that he has invited the board on different occasions to either attend the meetings at DILAC or just be part of them in one way or another. Lastly, he was also mentioning about the concern that he's brought up before. And it is the fact that in elementary school and preschool and kindergarten, there are no fences protecting the little kids in the schools. And he is very worried that maybe somebody would potentially just walk on campus and take one of those children with him, with this person. So that was the last comment that he made. And he was asking if we could please take a look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias, señor Juarez. And next comment is from Daniel Escutia. And it looks like Daniel needs to be promoted to the panel.
Hi, I'm Daniel Escutia from, I'm a senior from Santa Rosa High School. And to go off what Piper said, can you hear me?
Daniel, if you could speak just a little bit louder, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, right on. So I'm Daniel Escutia, a senior from Santa Rosa High School. And to go off what Piper had said earlier, we need more in terms of like protection. Hearing that like our staff knew of a threat, yet never told or gave a heads up to any parents or students as a warning until concerned parents and students had to call into school is kind of like concerning for us as students. And every year I've been at Santa Rosa High School, like since freshman year, we've had to go into a lockdown, besides junior year because of COVID. Well, like, I think we really need to like have more lockdowns in school as well because it's just not very, it doesn't feel very safe. And I've also like been told by my woodshop teacher, like we have huge windows in that class, which brings a very big view to like anybody on the outside. Sorry, he, he told us that he's been asking for curtains from our, our school board, I believe. And he has not received those and it's kind of worrying because like if we were to go into a lockdown in that classroom, it's, everybody can see us and it's not very, it feels very scary. And I would like to make it out of high school and go to college. And yeah, I don't know.
Thank you, Daniel. Next is Haley Perez. Also needing to be promoted into the panel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Haley, we can hear you.
My name is Haley Perez and I am a senior at Santa Rosa High School. I am also concerned about some of the safety at our school because with the threat against our school last week, I personally did not know about it until a student in one of my classes told me. And I know that if, like, there is a serious threat, I would want my parents to know. And nothing was sent out until later in the day and it was very vague, not discussing what the threat was really about or anything like that. And so I think we need a better way of communicating with students and parents and just sending out the information.
Thank you. And next is Roman. Roman, could you please state your full name for the record?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Roman Acosta and I'm a senior at Santa Rosa High School. And much like my fellow students, I am incredibly worried about like the lack of safety in our school and how we don't have an officer on campus. I have been incredibly worried and like, one of my friends is getting targeted by, by a group of people and he almost got jumped and I had to inform one of the teachers and luckily they were able to get there. But I just, I think it would be much safer if we had like a campus officer. And I just think it's sort of ridiculous that we have to kind of be worrying about our safety at a public school. And like I've been through two lockdowns since I've been at Santa Rosa. And the first one was on the last day of school and I just, I think it's ridiculous that we have to like worry about this, like every day, it's looming in the back of our, our, you know, our minds as we're talking or, you know, at lunch, it's like thinking like, what if someone came to school like armed, you know? And especially with the incident last Friday where, you know, they sort of withheld information from us that, that was, you know, concerning and it, I don't know, I just, I feel like I should express my concern to you guys. And I don't know, maybe do something about it because I don't have the power to do anything about it, but you do. You know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised for this item.
I want to very much appreciate our speakers who took the time to speak to us tonight, to bring their concerns to the board. Particularly our students who are expressing their ideas and many tonight were fears. I know that our administration have, is hearing this as well and that we'll be addressing it. So students, thank you so much. It is your education, it is your environment, and we, we are listening. Thank you. At this point, we are at the point in the meeting, D, D means its reports. And we are going to be hearing from the CSEA, California School Employees Association, Santa Rosa Seventy-Five, their report. So who do we have here for that tonight?
If there's a representative present from CSEA, could you please raise your hand? And President Fong, it doesn't look like there will be a report this evening.
Thank you very much. And we are on D two. This is the Santa Rosa Teachers Association Report, SRTA.
And they're on their way over.
So this would be President Howell?
They didn't put their name in, so we will see, but I believe so.
There she is.
It's me, sorry. I am more than just the Santa Rosa Teachers Association, but good evening, I am Catherine Howell. I represent Santa Rosa Teachers Association as their president. More than about eight hundred and sixty members strong, we are right now. The public comments were pretty powerful. I hope everyone was listening very closely and want to echo the same sentiment that we heard from the students and the parents to say that the teachers are feeling much the same way. The staffing crisis is adding to the fact that we do not feel safe on our campuses. And the incidents at Montgomery and Santa Rosa High School on Friday just sort of brought it to the forefront and triggered a lot of conversation about how safe are our campuses really? I know that, you know, we have the safety plans ready to be looked at and approved by this board this evening. But could we really follow those plans given the huge number of guest teachers that we might have on a campus on any given day? The lack of staff that would be just simply not there to do the jobs that have been assigned to them. And that is a real concern. Do we have the training to react to a shooter on campus? Most of us don't think that we do. And, you know, that brings us to the information, the communication. We know that it was more than four hours from the start of the incident at Montgomery High School to the first parent square that went out to teachers, followed by a parent square email that went out to families. Because of the nature of teaching and our teachers not reading email, my understanding is at least Santa Rosa High School teachers got a heads up to check their email. Didn't happen at Monty. And so we had teachers at Montgomery High School being informed about the incident by their students. And that is unacceptable, absolutely. You know, a subtle heads up, check your email, there should be something in place that we know that our administrators are doing what needs to be done. We can trust they're making the right decisions to keep us safe, to keep our students safe. But this lack of communication frankly created a lot of fear. It created a lot of anger and it created a feeling that that trust had been broken. First, because teachers weren't informed. And secondly, because the information that did came out, come out hours later, seemed a little, too little, too late. No details, like someone earlier said. And a lot of just sort of, eh, kind of sweep it under the rug, no big deal situation, which, you know, made us, again, what, what if it had been, you know, a different school? Every teacher in the district said, what if it had been my school? Would we have been better prepared? What will happen next time? How are we going to make sure our students are safe if we don't know what's going on ourselves? That's a tough question. And a lot of people were really, you know, concerned that they wouldn't have been able to answer that question. They didn't know what was going on. Doors wide open for COVID, right? Get the air in there, but also, you know, if no one's saying, hey, maybe lock your door, that's a huge concern. So I know a lot of questions, a lot of appeals tonight from the, the community to do something about it. I think we do need to have this tough conversation. I think it's time to reconsider the SRO decision. Did it make our campuses safer? You know, on the surface, it doesn't feel like it did. We know that the SROs provided. Um, we know that the SROs provided services that weren't replaced. Um, we didn't bring in more people to replace their presence. We simply took something away. So I, I would ask that you think about that. Think about the impact. Um, that this, the, all of this tension and stress and, and just complete, you know, turmoil that we're living through has had on our students and our teachers. And please help us find a way to make our campuses safer. Um, for our students and for our teachers and for every single person that visits or works on our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. Superintendent Trinell, it is time for your report.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, uh, students, staff and community. Um, good evening. Um, today marks day seventy-eight of school. And it is my honor to include in my report tonight. Um, that we are going to be acknowledging and recognizing two of our district's teachers um, for their exemplary work, serving students and families through the pandemic uh, of the last school year. The awards are presented tonight by the Sonoma County Office of Education. I want to welcome Dr. Steve Harrington, uh, to the panel. Who is the superintendent of the Sonoma County Office of Education, as well as David Williams, who is here representing the Community First Credit Union. Um, if we could also bring forward Heather Garcia Rossi, an English Language Arts teacher with our district and Lisa Peel, who teaches career technical education at Santa Rosa High School. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Harrington. Welcome, Dr. Harrington.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, I just moved the other day. So if I have boxes in the background, you know what I'm trying to unpack. Um, this is one of the best parts of the job is to recognize those who give back to students. There are many exemplary teachers in the Santa Rosa, you, Santa Rosa School District, and there are many exemplary teachers in Sonoma County. Uh, and it's always hard each year to select, uh, those teachers who are nominated through the administrators. To be representing Sonoma County. We have, uh, had, always have quality candidates that have made it to the finalists. Uh, your district had two candidates of exemplary qualifications. And one was being recognized in a new category. And I want to bring it up because Lisa Peel, um, I do a lot of business with her buying flowers for um, a lot of things for our school district and our schools. Um, and, uh, she does an exemplary program as the ag teacher and she does a great job in the floral situation, uh, for the county office as it relates to recognition. So first of all, she was recognized for the Public School Community Leadership Award. Connecting community and school, making schools of value, making the community recognize their purpose a, and how they benefit everyone. So Lisa is being recognized and is also a financial beneficiary from the credit union, uh, for, as, as a recipient. The other person that I, uh, wish to recognize is Heather Garcia Rossi. And she is a teacher in your system and she teaches English Language Arts. And I met her the other day when she came into my office. And, uh, one of the things she pointed out to me was she doesn't like to be recognized. And I said, she's lucky this year because it is, uh, a Zoom situation. We normally go into the room with flowers, noise makers, balloons, and we videotape the whole presentation. So for somebody who doesn't want to be recognized, she's getting off pretty easy this year. So she realized that, um, and, uh, was appreciative of that. But you have two quality individuals that represent all the quality individuals that you have working in your schools for this year's nomination. And I just wish to say thank you to both of them for the hard work that they do for you. I know you probably want to say thank you to them as well. Um, so congratulations ladies. Uh, you, you represent your district well and you represent the county well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. And Mr. Williams, would you like to say a few words, please?
Yes, first of all, uh, like Dr. Harrington said, Heather, you're getting off easy. Uh, we had a live presentation in Petaluma back in October with Dexter Harrington. And as I usually demand when it's live, I had one of those cheesy four foot wide checks that I presented to Danielle Kennedy, who was the Teacher of the Year in, uh, For Sonoma County in Petaluma. And demanded that she take a picture and it was in the PD and all that. So you are getting off early. Uh, very easy, I should say, but, uh, both Heather as, uh, the finalist for Teacher of the Year and then Lisa for the new category, this, uh, Community Involvement Award. Uh, they also have received checks already from Community First Credit Union. And why do we do this? Well, we were started by teachers in nineteen fifty-nine because teachers back in those days had a difficult time getting mortgage loans from banks. They weren't paid during the summer and, uh, loan officers wondered how they would make their payments. So we've always championed, uh, teachers. Uh, we think it's the most important job there is. They're raising our next generation of workers, critical thinkers, entrepreneurs, voters. Uh, and this is vital to our society. So in our way, we're happy to do these checks and we've been doing them for years. Uh, for worthy teachers, all teachers are worthy, but the, the best of the best teachers. So it's our honor. And again, congratulations Heather and Lisa for great careers and being recognized like you should be for your exemplary work. So Community First honors you, honors teachers and thank you, um, Sonoma County Office of Education and, uh, the Santa Rosa Board for allowing us to take part in this.
Yay. Thank you so much, David Williams, Dr. Harrington, Lisa, way to go. Heather, way to go.
Awesome. Thank you for being with us tonight and congratulations again, Heather and Lisa. Um, just exemplary. Thank you so much for all you do and for the school sites who support you. All right. So, um, we can go ahead and excuse our guests. Uh, thank you so much. I do want to end, um, around the issue of safety. Um, you know, I really want to reiterate that the safety of our students and our staff is our highest priority. It can sometimes feel like Oh, I'm sorry. Am I in your channel? Yes, ma'am. It can sometimes feel like lip service. I understand this. Um, and I also understand that we need more staff. Um, we have positions open and we are looking for the best candidates to join our team. And so if there's anyone here tonight who's interested in doing that, a selfish plug, that we would love to meet you and see how you can join our team. Um, we have an amazing, uh, group of students, families and staff, um, in our school district community. Um, and I really want to acknowledge and appreciate the comments that were made tonight, which I know are really at the heart of it, focused on the safety of all. So I do just want to take a moment to do that. Um, when we work together, when our students and our parents, our staff and our community um, work together to ensure that incidents are reported immediately. We're able to take swift action and we have been able to do that with past incidents. Um, I want to take a moment and recognize um, those individuals who in recent, um, recent cases, including the Montgomery Incident. Um, because something we, our students and our, our families, our community followed what we asked, which is when you see something, say something. And that is what happened, which allowed us to take, even though it felt prolonged, we were able to take, take swift action. Um, I welcome the opportunity to meet with stakeholders on this matter and I will be doing so. Um, I'm grateful that people are willing to meet with me, uh, on this issue. We do take these matters very seriously. We will continue to listen and we will continue to take action on safety and security measures for all. Um, and Board President Fong, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. At this moment, we're going to take a minute to change interpreters. So I'll just take a second. Thank you, President Fong. We're all set. Thank you. All right. Thank you. It is time for the Board President Report and, um, tonight we were to be, um, actually next week, we will be reorganizing the board and reorganizing the board means that we are going to be electing new officers of the board. And the officers of the board are the Board President, the Board Vice President and the Board Clerk. And that will happen at a special board meeting next week, uh, per ed code in terms of dates. But I have chosen to give an end of, end of my tenure as the Board President Report tonight. So, um, I have been privileged to be the Board President for two years and it has been a privilege and it's been, um, it's been eye opening. Um, I'm very grateful. So here we go. And, uh, this is for all of you, including especially my board colleagues and our, and our stakeholders. Uh, it has been an incredibly tumultuous two years. As we all know, we have lived through it. And it's the most tumultuous years I've seen in my forty-plus years in education. Um, which includes the year we actually had furlough days, like many, I think maybe eight, six or eight. Uh, due to, due to recession and also the school closures during, um, fire and smoke. Um, so here's a quick overview of, of two years of what we've done together in two years as a board. Um, we said goodbye to a six-year superintendent. Um, Diane Kitmora, who helped us oversee our move to diversity, equity and inclusion. And also the first half of our COVID response. Um, we have welcomed and are relying on Superintendent Anna Trinell, our former Assistant Superintendent in Human Resources and a former Assistant Superintendent in Curriculum Instruction elsewhere. And who I am convinced on a weekly, daily basis that we did a good job in selecting her as our superintendent. It missed a very strong slate of candidates, truthfully. We entered this twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, ready to tackle our new initiatives. And we are now in our twenty-second month of COVID, who's counting. In all of its iterations and we've spent about a year's worth of school time in distance learning. Um, and then a few months in hybrid learning and now in-person learning this full past semester. Um, including an expanded independent study, very different. All to provide education during this pandemic with safety at the forefront. And COVID hitting our community in very disproportionate ways. Our school and district staffs, they have worked incredibly hard to keep connection with students. They actually became new practitioners during the pandemic. Their learning curve was, you know, just steep. And they actually were educating entire families during Zoom, not just their own student. Yet too many students just did not have the wherewithal uh, to stay connected to their learning for all different reasons, not their fault. The pandemic showed schools to be the canaries in the mine. Uh, we were the early warning system that indicate many things falling apart in our society. And when schools are structured on the very thinnest of scaffolds, that being our economic system and how we take care of human beings. Which means health and shelter and incoming inequality. It's tough. The economic toll that the pandemic has taken everywhere is presenting itself in very personal ways to each of us, to each of our families. And we see it as school districts in our role as board members throughout the country. They all have systems that are challenged, uh, from a scarcity of personnel that we heard of tonight. Which had rip, which have ripple effects up and down our system. To a brand new pivot for independent study, to an abundance of one-time dollars that we must plan for immediately. It's almost like fire-ready aim, almost. It's, it's that much money so quickly. To different beliefs about vaccinations and how we keep our schools safe during COVID. We're facing all of that. And doing education. Our staffs are classified, are certificated or administrative staffs. They're doing more than just standing up. They're, they are coming to work every day to provide for our students with heart and soul. We have strong leadership, which is pulled in so many directions. It's like changing the wheels on a nineteen eighties bus while it is flying down a superhighway. Also changing the engine. The care and love in classrooms when we're there, when we see it and on our campuses. The care and love from staff to students, it's, it's visible, it's palpable. It, it looks and feels the same and it always has that kind of connection. If that is a complete testimony to our shared purpose and mission and the adults that work in our, in our district. In the past couple of years, our board, we have passed a record number of resolutions. Um, in addition to our beloved annual appreciation weeks. The board, we have made demands for the government to be clear about COVID. When it was so uneasy and so confusing at the first. We've advocated for school funding during this uncertain pandemic time. We have stood for ethnic studies. We have stood for Black Lives Matter. We have stood against anti-Asian hate. We have stood for the fifteen-dollar minimum wage in Santa Rosa City and we are working hard to get there ourselves. We began to do land acknowledgements. In order to recognize and honor that we exist now in another people's land who lived and worked and loved long before here, long before most of us were here. And these resolutions very much show what this board values, that we value people and how we should treat each other. And while there is no mandate in these resolutions. The board believes that words are powerful and intentions are powerful. And that we are strengthening the human environment for students to thrive. We did not get to move forward very much in our initiatives. We've been busy. COVID sucked up all the air in the room, almost literally. We are thankful that we have maintained school in person this full semester, five days a week, open completely. Thanks to our safety protocols and monitoring and care and work by folks in our system. We have spent time on reshaping and ensuring the future of our school on Sebastopol Avenue, the Cook slash CCLA campus. And the growth of this charter school. When I took a look back at, at all the meetings we had was COVID or CCLA almost kind of exclusively and also someone, yes, our, yes, our O's. You know, we extend this energy and expend this energy and how we serve our students in these neighborhoods as they matriculate to high school. And we also work to support LCL in high school and being a school that keeps providing strong support for students in, in college and career success. All of our schools are valuable. But we grow at different times. We have different challenges at different times. And I'm thankful for the incredible energy brought to our students by the parent community and staff at these schools. It's all recognized. The board does recognize that completely. An important decision that we made this year, in, in fact, almost a non-decision, but it was a very strong decision in a way, was to allow our School Resource Officer Program agreement to lapse, to, to stay lapsed. And this was made with input from a dedicated ad hoc committee of staff and community members, including students. And this decision was not without controversy. Tonight, we are hearing that as well. With the continued calls to resurrect SRO program now. And in the final analysis, the board stands by this. We have strengthened our positive supports for well-being, for intervention, for identification of our kids in classes and our kids in distress. We've become more asset-based as opposed to deficit-based, where too many students believed that the police on campus were there to catch them doing wrong. Family histories and lived experiences of a fear of officers despite our school resource officers' best intentions and their own heart for kids. Each of them had that. We believe that a new relationship with the Police Department in Santa Rosa, new ways to specifically support and relate to youth and youth of color is what we must work on. Police on campus is not the answer to safety. As partners in community, we all need to be there. We all know we can get there. Safety on campus is knowing our students well. And it means bodies on campus. And as Superintendent Trunell spoke about, those bodies, we are trying to hire. This is, this is across the nation, not just here. So we are working on that and we understand it and we hear you. The equity work in our district remains at the forefront of this board's efforts. How do we ensure access to high-level, high-quality instruction and curriculum with the supports for success? I'm going to name an area that I firmly believe needs more of our laser focus, and that area is math. Math specifically grades five through twelve. Actually, five through ten. We're going to really narrow it down. I am convinced that math success is an arbiter of students, of a student's school self-esteem, a predictor of school success, and ultimately an adult's economic success. I believe that ma, math makes too many students believe that they can get through school or not get through school. Ask any adult about their school experience and math will factor in, no pun there intended, math will factor in as a characteristic, defining characteristic. And this isn't to criticize our math departments or teachers, far from it. It is to ask ourselves, ourselves, board, ourselves as policy, as a district, to look for and explore barriers that prevent success, barriers that stop both teachers and students alike and remove, and our job is to help remove these barriers, whatever it takes. As a board trustee, as the president, as a longtime educator, the key to student success ultimately are the connections that they make with their teachers. Rubber meets the road, bottom line. Teachers make or break the environment in classrooms. They make or break the relationships with their students. They make or break whether that student wants to continue learning or wants to stop learning. They are the healers. They are the social workers. They are the owie fixers for kids of all ages. While we hear so many stories of being overwhelmed right now, with good reason, with good reason, I continually count on the vibrancy and the creativity, the care and the heart of our staff, and they show up all the time. They do. And all the while, we know that school systems cannot run on goodwill, on volunteer efforts, cannot. A promise I make, and it is in our mission and vision as a board, is that I will continue to advocate at the state level for the kinds of assistance, the funding, the dollars, the matching grants, everything, and the attention that districts need to do their work. We all know schools are underfunded and we're being asked to do more and more. I am grateful to have had a full career in education at different levels of responsibility. My favorite position though has always been a classroom teacher. I appreciate the different lanes, the experiences and expertise of my colleagues on the board. And together, this is a group of people who bring incredible and valuable perspectives to what we do at Santa Rosa City Schools. I want to continue to learn and to teach. I am more than thrilled to continue my tenure on this board as a, as a trustee. So I'm going to share this one last thing with you. It's the model that I've used for a long time, and it's one from Maya Angelou. At the end of the day, I know you guys heard this. At the end of the day, people won't remember what you said or did, but they will remember how you made them feel. And this is how we will be successful as a district, as we make the path by walking together. Thank you.
Thank you, President Fong.
All right, so we will have an election next Wednesday. Um, we have board member report time now. Hands up. Do I miss you? Just shout out because you know I can't see you all. Okay, I see Director Sheffield.
Well, first I just want to say I had a great time with all of, all of you, my colleagues at the CSBA Conference last week. Many workshops to attend, workshops that I attended on equity, on school bond measures. Really interesting one on outdoor learning environments. I also attended a discussion by Napa Valley Unified on reopening schools safely during the height of the pandemic. The speakers were great. Dr. Rios was energetic and inspiring and, and Senator Richard Pan. He was really great, always, always is great. So I, I just want to say it was, it was nice to, to, to see all of you in person and attend this really worthwhile and amazing conference. And we, we weren't able to do it earlier because of the pandemic, but it was great to, to do a lot of catch-up last week. I do also want to say I, I had a meeting yesterday with Santa Rosa Police Chief Navarro, and we discussed school site safety. We discussed behavioral health. And we also discussed the city of Santa Rosa's reauthorization of Measure O, Public Safety Services that'll be coming up next year. A lot of discussion and a shared meetings that you, ongoing meetings that you've had. And that's great. And, and you know, and, and you know, as we continue more discussions, we get input around campus safety. You know, it, 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 you know, hearing from students tonight and, and how they feel, it's really impactful. And we just need to let our, our students and our school community, our families know that, that we, we hear you. And we want to do all that we can to, to ensure that our, our students are safe while they're on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Jill McCormick and then Trustee Omar Medina.
Thank you, President Fong. First of all, I just want to say thank you to you, President Fong, for your report and just for your leadership during an incredibly challenging time for any school board, any school district. And you rose to the occasion and led us. And I just, I just cannot thank you enough. I'm full of gratitude for the work that you have done. And I'm excited about the work that you are going to continue to do. So thank you very much. And then I just wanted to report out just a little bit about the CSBA Annual Education Convention Conference as well. And yes, it was really great for us to be together in person as a board. We have been together so seldom during this time because of just logistics and public access to our meetings. So it was really great to just physically be in each other's presence, especially after the last two years that we've worked together. So I was very appreciative of that, for that opportunity. And I think the two things that stood out the most to me at the conference, one was I went to several workshops that dealt specifically with burnout that is facing our administrators and our teachers and our staff in light of where we are and reopening the schools and playing catch-up and moving forward and changing the world we function in. And, and the, the short staffing issue up and down the state and the sub-issue up and down the state, it was powerful to hear the statistics. It was powerful to hear from teachers, administrators, and staff about their experiences. And I know that it's out there. I know it exists. I'm an educator myself. I feel it myself. And so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work of our faculty, administrators, and staff. And I know that the burnout is real. And I also know that we do hear a lot of the challenges that our students are facing right now. And those are acknowledged and will be addressed. However, many of the people I talked to, or most of the people I talked to are just so thrilled to have schools back open and access to be on campus and working with their teachers and seeing their students. And so just as we are embarking on a couple of weeks off with the winter break, please restore and rest yourself. And I know that you're burnt out and tired and just thank you for the work that you're doing to find a way to recharge because our community and our students need you desperately. And we will do everything in our power to continue to support you. And then the last thing is I heard two different, went to two different sessions that dealt specifically with some effective use and the power of a student school board trustees. And so Trustee Baird, I'm really excited to talk to you more about this and what I heard and what I learned and just to echo what Director Sheffield said about the power of hearing directly from the students tonight. And at any other time when we have direct connection from the students to the board and getting their feedback and their input and their thoughts and their needs is extremely powerful. And it was exciting to hear from school, student trustees, former student trustees and current student trustees up and down the state in all of these districts and the power that's having especially right now in light of dealing with COVID and just the direction and some thoughts on their behalf from the student perspective. So I find that powerful. I'm excited to share that with Superintendent Trunell and our board as a whole, and of course with Trustee Baird. So thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Jill. Director Medina.
Thank you, President Fong. First of all, President Fong, thank you for your report. It was a good report. I wanted to just add in terms of the conference that we just attended, the California School Board Association, one of the things that was addressed that in one of the workshops that I attended was around math also. And it was about barriers that students face. And it took us to motivation. How oftentimes students are lacking motivation because of barriers that they face. And if we take the time to really understand what are these barriers, what's holding them back, what's providing fear to them succeeding, that if we address that, remove that barrier, that students can achieve at much greater levels and are motivated to succeed and do really well. So I'm interested in maybe us looking more into that. And, and the other point of that was the importance of collaboration and teachers collaborating to come up with different ways to address these issues. Because part, at the core of me, I truly believe that our students are capable of succeeding and achieving to great levels. But we all face many barriers. Life throws so many things at us. And I think us as a district, especially these last, was it, five years, whether it be fires, power shut-offs, now COVID. We have faced so many things. Our students and our families have dealt with so much impacts from that housing crisis, cost of living, all that is impacting our family so much, creating so many barriers and making it so difficult. Now we face a shortage of staff, shortage of teachers, which is going on throughout the state. And I think collaboration internally, but also as a community, is critically important. We have many barriers that make it even harder to do things, to get people on campus, to get people to help. But there are solutions if we work on finding them. I think we can work harder at doing that. I encourage us to collaborate more, to find ways, to solutions, to gauge our community and help people step up. And we find ways around all these obstacles for the sake of our students, for the sake of our community. So thank you all. And, and I'd just like to add that, you know, I've been engaged in this community for a long time, from the time as a student. And I am so proud to be a part of this board, an amazing board with amazing people, diverse board that reflects our community, that reflects many experiences. And so I just want to say thank you for all of you for serving and, and really to our community. Appreciate what we have because it's something that's hard to find in many places. And it's also a reflection of the community's competence to make the decision to elect these people, to elect us to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Director De La Cruz.
Adding my voice of thanks, President Fong, for your leadership and your kindness and the way that you walk through the world as an educator and a learner in every opportunity. It is just such a pleasure to work with you, to learn with you. I feel really grateful that you've spent the last two years of some of the most difficult times in our district, giving your, giving your all to us, you know, as your colleagues and as, as your, and as your, as your people. I'm just really grateful to you. Thank you for that. And I loved being at the, at the conference. So much gratitude for the energy and the creativity that continues to come out of California's education, educational thinkers and movers and shakers and listening to best practices and listening to, you know, what people continue to do to innovate in the most difficult of times was, was truly inspiring. I loved listening to, you know, what math teachers are doing to come together and to support each other with a particular focus on ensuring that, you know, when you, when you design to the margins, you actually ensure outcomes are, are improved for everybody in that classroom. And so really loved hearing, you know, about the ways in which districts have done that. Really appreciated the powerful voices at the California Black Educators Association. That was just an incredible place to be in and to hear those words of, of love and pride and joy and celebration in the face of such challenges across the state. It was also reassuring to know that we're not alone in the challenges that we face, but also recognize that we are special in that we have a board that really enjoys working together, that can, with lots of love and, and with lots of care, disagree with each other sometimes, but continue working together for the good of our district as a whole. So it was just a really beautiful moment to reflect together about, you know, the strengths that we have in front of us and the challenges that we have, that our strengths allow us to make sure that we're addressing in the, in the same way that we bring the joy to this work every day as, as board members. Thank you, students, for coming tonight to share. I think we still have lots of work to do to truly define safety for all people in our district and in our school systems and to make sure that we're reaching that shared understanding of what safety feels like. And so, you know, I, Director Sheffield, to your point, I too have had, you know, great conversations with Chief Navarro and feel like we have excellent partners in Santa Rosa Police Department to continue working through the challenges that, you know, our institutions together have the responsibility of solving to make sure that everybody is safe on our campuses. So students, thank you for coming. Please, please continue to engage with us. Please continue to lift your voices so that we can, we can hear you, we can work with you, and we can work for you. And to all those kids out there, I know that this, this next couple of weeks are, are finals and, you know, you're ramping up and you're feeling the, the pressure of, you know, what it feels like to really, really be back in school, to have things be, you know, feeling slightly normal at the same time that they feel so wacky. So for all of you who are doing that, I would say, you know, be gentle with yourselves. We are here to love and support you and to make sure that you are successful. That is our job. And we are doing everything we can to. Um, and we are doing everything we can to to make sure that you get through, you know, this first semester back. Anna, did you say 78 days? Seventy-eight days, you guys, right? This is what you've been able to do in 78 days. Um, so heads up. Um, heads high, hearts, heart forward, um, and we, we are here for you. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to say in 78 days, our student board member Georgia accomplished something incredible. Georgia, can you say, would you say? She just won.
Uh, hi.
Okay, so you, you're breaking up badly. Okay, Georgia, if you can still hear us, can you put it in the chat and maybe we can read it for you? While she's doing that, I'm just gonna say that there is no CSBA report tonight, by the way, which is the next thing, and I'm looking at the chat. Okay, hopefully she's typing. Okay, so she is a tennis star. She's a very young tennis star, and she and her sister are tennis stars, and they just won the North Coast Section Doubles in the whole North Coast Section, which is like, I think, over half the state of California. So um, and I think she's been champion before and she's probably on her way to the Olympics or something like that. So when she's not at the school board or doing homework, she's hitting the tennis ball.
I will, I will say that the North Coast Section is one of the most competitive sections in the country for high school sports. Um, so to win a championship there is an honor and quite an accomplishment. So thank you for representing us at the highest level. Congrats.
Can I, can I do one, one more quick announcement, speaking of EBS?
Yes.
Um, so freshman Hannah Thompson from Monti took um North Coast Sectionals or or state champions as a freshman in Girls Cross Country um a couple of weeks ago. Um, so go Vikings, go Hannah. Amazing, amazing accomplishment for a freshman to take states. Um, it was an awesome race, lots of cool um Santa Rosa City Schools, amazing girls runners in that race. Um, you guys really, um, you made us proud. So thank you so much, uh, Delante.
And the last thing I want to say about George is that she and her sister are usually competitors, I think. Um, but they decided to team up the last time they could possibly do it in their high school careers, and they just trumped. Okay, so thanks, Georgia. All right, we are finally moving on. It's seven thirty-five to our e-discussion action items. And the first one we have tonight is an action item. It's a public board meeting via teleconference in per um AB three sixty-one. We've seen this before, and this is meetings during COVID. And uh, Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. Um, this item is to be brought forward every thirty days to the board for consideration if there's going to be a continuance of our board meetings in a virtual setting. Uh, with that, I hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
We need a motion on this.
We do public.
I'm sorry, Christine Medina.
I said, do we do public comment first?
We do. Let's open that.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E one, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Any discussion, Cory?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the continuance of conducting public meetings virtually as specified in Assembly Bill three sixty-one.
A second. All right, so that was motioned by Director Medina and seconded by Stephanie Manieri. Uh, let's have that vote, roll call vote, please.
Director Baird. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
No.
President Fong.
Aye. Okay, that passes six to one. Uh, we're moving now to item number two. It's an action item, school site safety plans. Um, Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I welcome um our, let me actually get to the item. I welcome our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mike Shepherd, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell, Board President Fong, members of the board and staff and community. For your consideration tonight, we have before you the comprehensive school safety plans for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And briefly, California Ed Code thirty-two, two eighty through thirty-two, two eighty-nine requires that we develop and review annually and update our comprehensive school safety plans by March first. We are taking these plan, bringing these plans to you far sooner than March first. And our goal every year is to bring them to you in November. However, this year we had some logistical things to work out as these plans are also reviewed by the city, uh, the police and the fire department. So for uh, we have those, uh, have had those meetings. They have looked at these plans. And um, they are here for your consideration. And so with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Board questions? If I don't call any of you, because I don't see your hand. Okay, I see no questions. We are going to take public comment on the safety plans, and actually, we are going to now be uh limiting comment to two minutes. So a public comment?
So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E two, school site safety plans with a two-minute time limit, please raise your hands. And our first comment is from Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I'm a teacher at Stealing Elementary. Um. The plans look good on paper, but I don't see them being effective in reality. Um, I've read our safety plan every year I've been in the district. We don't have the people to do what it says in it. And, you know, we words and intentions are great, but when it comes to action, we have to be prepared for the actual actions that we need. I'm particularly concerned that in the COVID section of the safety plan for my school, it says nothing about testing students asymptomatic. So we know how many kids we actually have who are sick. I have a student in my class who recently stayed home the whole ten days of quarantine without testing with symptoms, which means they probably had COVID, but they don't count on their records. And because they never tested, we never actually contract trace. We never look to see if anybody else in the classroom needs to be informed. The families are not informed that there was a student with symptoms in their classroom. We need to have testing. So when a kid has symptoms at school, we test them on the way out the door to home so that we know that we are keeping our students safe. I am disturbed that we're four months into school and we have not provided a single asymptomatic test district-wide to every student. I know that was contentious. There were parents that said that their kids would be scared of having something put in their nose. And so we shouldn't test the kids. And I get it. Public pressure is hard, and there was a lot of public pressure both ways. But how can we keep people safe from COVID if we don't know if it's in the room? We need asymptomatic testing of every staff and every student every week. We need to get it done. The state's paying for it. It doesn't even cost us money. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Sheila Walker.
Hi, good evening again. Um, I did read the, the site plan for the school where my son attends at Rigan Valley Middle School and also some of the others, um, just to kind of get a comparison. My question is, how do you determine how many campus supervisors are on site? I guess that's what they're called, campus supervisors, or people who are there when they're at lunch or they're, the kids are on break. Um, is it per student population or is it, uh, does it mirror ADA? Because um at RVMS, at least, I mean, it's a, it's a big campus. I don't know um the exact comparisons to others. But um, just curious if it's, if it's based on um students uh attending the site or um some other method or metric as well. Um, I know that we've talked about the SROs, but uh I didn't see that the SROs, were they included in previous plans? Um, because I know that that program was put on hold by this board, but um I'm just curious if that was um something that was in the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maureen Cecil.
Hello, um, my name is Maureen Cecil, and I am a teacher at Piner High School as well as a parent of two children in the district, district. Um, I too am going to echo what Micah said. We really need asymptomatic testing. I am a high school teacher, and on a daily basis, I have students who are out sick but are not getting tested, either because it's not convenient. And as a parent, I've tested my own students multiple times. Every time they have a cough, I'm like, gotta get tested because that's the model I want my own families to follow at school. But I think that most of the families are not because it's too complicated. And as a teacher, it's really hard to find a place and a time that I can take out of my day without having a substitute called and creating subplans for my own children to go get tested. That's a huge barrier, and I'm trying really hard. I'm very tech savvy. And I also have the funds and a healthcare plan, so it makes it a lot easier. I think that having asymptomatic testing on site will take care of a bunch of those problems and also really tell us how much COVID is in the community. Omicron might not be here in Sonoma County yet, but it will be. And if it's more contagious than the Delta variant, we're gonna have a lot more students and staff who are sick. I would also like to um put forward that we also do need to have campus supervisors and other classified staff, and we need to offer them more money. The reason we don't have good candidates is because they are at twelve dollars an hour. That is not a livable wage in Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anastasio Tobar Rose.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming that we're still doing isolation tents, and I just want to report that our isolation tent was stolen at Caesar Chavez Language Academy, and it's been over a month and it's still not replaced. So I'd like to swear this to first thing tomorrow that our isolation tent can replace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Perez.
Thank you. Superintendent Trinell, President Fong, directors. Uh, I teach music at Montgomery High School, and I told my students they need to be here tonight to see how our leadership talks about their safety. And I'm proud that many of them heeded the call to be here. Uh, I told them they need to report to their friends about what they see in here tonight. In the aftermath of an on-campus incident back in October, I asked my students whether or not they feel safe on campus. I found their comments to be insightful, illuminating and heartbreaking, and I know students on other campuses have similar feelings. Our students need help, and they know they need help. Several said they do not feel safe going to the bathroom on our campus. Perhaps it's because of the students taking a vape break or the students sitting on top of stalls staring down at them. Others have said that they're afraid they will have students stolen from them while it's, or uh, things stolen from them while at school, excuse me. Small supervisor staffs on bigger campuses sometimes make it difficult to adequately monitor every square inch, but I think we can do better. Our students have noticed that we need more bodies. Almost every one of my students has noticed when one of our principals has substituted for their classes this year. We talked the other day about how a principal's single most important responsibility is to keep our campus safe. And my students agree that they can't really do that if they're struggling to teach something outside of their content areas with no prep. Sometimes, though, the school just runs out of bodies. There are no more teachers on prep, there are no more substitutes, and there are no principals to cover classes. No adult shows up, and fifteen to thirty teenagers are then just supposed to stay quietly by their class for two hours and not cause trouble. Again, our students have noticed that we need more bodies. I also have several members of the LGBTQIA community, and they notice when adults don't make an effort to stop expressions of hate towards them. They very much notice when a passing adult just walks by without saying a word, and I find this particularly appalling. There is so much more that I could share, but I offer that all of us, the quote-unquote adults in the room, should hear something that we have the power to improve from the small sampling. At the end of the day, better is better, and we can do better if we choose to. Make no mistake, though, our students are watching, and they've noticed that they're not getting the educational environment that they deserve.
Thank you. Next is Carmen Molina.
Good evening. I come here tonight as a concerned teacher and parent of Santa Rosa City Schools, and I want to discuss how unsafe our children are at school. I speak tonight in defense of my coworkers and across the school district. Many of my colleagues deal with situations that are unimaginable. From elementary to high school, the same narrative is being shared. We call down to the office, and our staff are not answering because they are manning the isolation tents. We call our admin, and they're not answering because they're subbing in our classrooms. What are teachers supposed to do when there's a dangerous situation and no one is there to pick up the phone? If teachers are unable to get ahold of the office and admin, how are we supposed, supposed to protect the children? Tonight, you're approving a safety plan for a number of schools, and these documents are just a general document. We need more from the safety plan. We need staff to be there and be able to implement these safety plans. We need a way to communicate, and we need to be trained on what to do, because frankly, your staff do not know what to do. We are begging for your help. President Fong, you spoke about the SROs and how we do not want our kids to be fearing that they are going to be caught, but yet we have students on campus with guns, with knives, who are making it unsafe for the rest of the kids. And we need to have the SROs there, making a stance and making it safe for our kids. So please, help us protect the kids and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nick. Nick, could you please state your full name for the record?
Yeah, hello, uh, Nick Caston. I'm a parent at Caesar Chavez Language Academy, and I volunteer on campus uh each week in my son's classroom. Um, and I want to just comment on the campus supervisor positions and kind of all of the additional staff positions for safety. Um, I want to echo what was said earlier about these positions very much needing to be paid at a higher rate. The challenge isn't that you haven't approved the positions, that you can't fill the positions with people that are able to stay in them for an extended period of time. I looked at the most recent job posting for a campus supervisor for our campus. It was sixteen dollars and ten cents an hour. Anyteen hundred twenty dollars an hour in this city is absolutely absurd. Now, I don't know what the bargaining unit's been doing for these positions. They've clearly been sleeping on their job during negotiations. So I suggest that you, as the board, take the incredibly um bold step of proactively raising these uh positions pay so you can fill the positions with people that are going to stay in them, get to know the students and help support these safety plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Good evening. It seems like I keep hearing and echoing from parents and staff and every individual regarding campus safety. It is ridiculous, again, that you're taking resources away from the kid's safety in order to enact your COVID policies. I think it's ridiculous that the children don't feel safe. Being a minority, growing up in a school. Being a minority, growing up in a school where kids brought guns, drugs, and God knows what to school, I understand what the process is. Most of you people haven't lived a single day in that kind of an environment. Now, I have no clue what your backgrounds are, but I can tell you that where you are currently, living in Sonoma County, you guys are not sitting in an urban environment like Oakland or Richmond or Vallejo. But I can say that you're getting the same content that we have already been exposed to. Your imbecilic idea of taking off campus security because it's racist, or something of that nature, makes absolutely no sense. None at all. You're saying that it discriminates against minorities? I am a minority. I watched kids get beat up as a kid. I watched all kinds of things happen that were inappropriate, and we had those police officers on campus. Your teachers are incapable of reacting to any kind of school shooter or anything on a campus to keep these children safe. These children are bringing guns to school more than likely because other children are bringing guns to school, bringing threats to them. This is everyday life in an urban setting. Now that it's out here in your suburban settings, now you guys are trying to ramp up your ideas and figure out what you're gonna do to get your heads out of your areas that I don't want to say. It's interesting that you, every person on this board, wanted to go ahead and say, hey, get rid of the RSOs. That makes a lot of sense. Look where you are now. All the parents are having the same co- same, same issues and same wonderings if you guys are competent enough to do your job. Again, you work for us. We don't work for you.
Mr. Pryor, I apologize, but it is two minutes now. I think the wrong timer was accidentally started for the beginning of your comment. But thank you for your comment. Our next comment is Deanna Oliveras. Two-minute comment, please.
Hi there. I echo what everybody else said about the SRO issue, and I think it's really alarming that so many people are calling in and now addressing the fact that campuses are unsafe because there had been the gun at Montgomery High School and such. And within the last year or two, you have, this board has created a committee for the SRO program, and no parents weighed in then because it didn't affect your kid. But now it's affecting your kid, and now parents and teachers are now weighing in. And this is why it's really important that you need to pay attention to what our school board is doing, not when it's convenient for you, and not when your kid's affected. I called in a year ago about the same situation. I'm still calling in a year, a year from now. And I think that, I'm glad that this is recorded, and it's on YouTube, and I think that parents and teachers and administrators need to realize that Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group in the county are the ones that insure our school, and we need to hold them accountable. Contact their insurance group, use the Stop It app, and let them know, send them video clips of these board meetings where parents, teachers, administrators, and even Santa Rosa School Teacher Association president is pretty much begging for SROs to be on campus. But because you want to be social justice warriors, and because George Floyd got killed, and you don't agree with it, we have to pull the cops off campus because they're racist. It's disgusting. What is it gonna take for you to take care of our kids? Our kids will end up dead by a gun before they even die of COVID. But you're not gonna do anything about it. And you're gonna vote on stuff, and you're not gonna listen. And it disgusts me that you don't take your stakeholders' opinions into consideration. There's been no town halls, not for any of the trustees in any areas. You don't respond to emails. File formal complaints against the school board. They'll ignore your emails if you file a formal complaint. They cannot ignore your emails. Go to this.
Ms. Oliveras, I have to cut you off there. I'm sorry, your two-minute time limit was up a little bit ago. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised for item E2.
Board members, any discussion on school site safety plans? I will say this. School site safety plans do no good when they are in a binder on a shelf. They need to be active documents. We need to be drilling. We need to have incredible communication. They're incredibly comprehensive. You cannot plan for every single scenario, but we need to make sure lines of communication are open. That includes not just with staff and students, but with parents as well. So we're hearing that. I understand that. Entertainer motion?
You got two hands up, President Fong.
Since I can't see it, because I won't.
Trustee Medina.
Um, trustee Medina.
Yeah, just, I was gonna ask if staff could maybe share what the process is for parents to get engaged in the future development of school site safety plans, so that, you know, people that are really active and passionate about this know how to get involved. As parents, they're part of the process.
Yes. Director Medina, the school site safety plan must be developed by a committee that includes a community member. So that's either the site council, or the principal may designate a safety committee, but at least one community member is required. So I'm, I'm sure if a community member wishes to take part in their school's safety plan, they could reach out to their principal.
Trustee McCormick.
Were you finished, trustee Medina? Sounds like you cut out.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have a question. Since Director De La Cruz and Director Sheffield both have spoken with the chief of police, and we are speaking about school safety plans this evening, and we've heard a lot of comments regarding SROs. I'm just wondering if either President Fong or Superintendent Trinell can remind us and the public what our status is, so to speak, with collaborating, revisiting that discussion, where we are on those decisions. I know that our agreement had lapsed during COVID, but I'm just wondering where we stand with that and where we're going with it.
Superintendent Trinell, the only thing I have to say is that it lasts before COVID, actually. We were existing without an MOU, and that the next thing was that the Santa Rosa City Schools was going to partner, continue to have conversations with the Santa Rosa Police Department as to our forward partnership, and what that might look like in a new iteration.
Thank you, Board President Fong, yes. So since the decision to not continue SROs, the police department, I do not speak on their behalf. However, in conversations with them, they had to make some decisions about the SRO program that they were funding. And so, you know, in that case, myself and Chief Navarro meet regularly. We are doing research on other ways that we can partner that provides the opportunities to have the additional support between us, and at the same time, take into consideration the, the reception of having additional individuals from law enforcement on campus, and ensuring that we are paying attention and listening to the feedback that we received, which led to the decision of the board to not continue the SRO program. But we do have a very strong, committed partnership with the Santa Rosa Police Department to continue to explore what that could mean for us in the future.
Anything else, Vice President McCormick?
No, thank you.
Okay.
You do have some more hands up.
You do, we do. Trustee Flores.
Yeah, just going back to what some of our students mentioned from Santa Rosa High School, that they haven't had a, you know, a safety drill yet. Looking at these safety plans, it looks like, for example, Montgomery, it says that these drills are only done once a year. And then in the Santa Rosa one, it says these drills are scheduled six times a year. So, so my question is, one, I have a few questions, but this one. Don't we have a uniform set of policy in terms of having drills per year? Do we have? And shouldn't we have had drills at least? You know, I sent her us a high school already, since they're scheduled to have six a year. So, and I can take the, you know, I'll take that from anyone who can answer those questions.
Thank you, Director Flores. I will actually defer to Dr. Armstrong on the site practices around these drills.
Great, thank you. Good evening. So what I know about the drills is that they're often rotated. And I know that Santa Rosa High School recently had a drill, not a lockdown drill, though. And so what I can do is, if you're interested in particular schedules, I can gather that information and get it to Superintendent Trinell. And that would list out when their lockdown drills or the different schedules when they're actually performed.
And then, so what's the difference with, between, you know, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but in Montgomery, it says they're scheduled to have one, you know, drill, and it says one locked up, one of these following drills, right? It could be a Northway lockdown per year versus Santa Rosa having six per year. So I guess I like to see some continuity across all high schools in terms of what's expected at all high schools, and a timeline also, because, you know, if we are hearing from our students say that they haven't had a drill by now, I mean, that is, you know, a little bit alarming. Maybe he missed it or whatnot, I don't know. But I mean, if this is what our students are reporting, I think we need to listen to that and make sure that we do have that, you know, lockdown ourselves, no pun intended, to make sure that these are set throughout the year in a scheduled manner throughout all our high schools and middle schools and elementary schools. So, thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing that report. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The only other thing that I'll add to that is, I believe the student was referring to the lockdown drill, because drills do happen quarterly. And there's also some expectations coming out of ed code for what drills we offer and when. And so we will have that conversation with the principal team and get something out that we'll have available. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong.
Director De La Cruz.
Thank you. I, my question was really also about making sure that we continue the conversation about what resources need to be put into place to ensure social, emotional safety, to ensure that there are additional resources to support kids who are feeling like they're in a crisis while they're at school. Because that, those are the additional resources that we really heard from our community and from our students that were needed in schools to really support, right? Student safety with a, with a different set of skill sets that can typically be represented inside of a law enforcement agency. I think that's one of the things that Santa Rosa PD is also doing so beautifully is really with the introduction of its cahoots program, recognizing that those are skill sets that they're bringing to their law enforcement responses to ensure that there is community safety with some of those, those resources in place. So I just, I think those are, those are excellent areas that we really teed up in our conversation as a community that I would love to see come back, right? What are those altern, what are those alternatives to a law enforcement presence that also really do support student safety, campus safety, and community safety overall? The other, the other question that I, that I heard here, and I'd love to just hear how we're, we're, we're working these things, is the interplay between the COVID safety plan and the school safety plan. So I recognize that, right, COVID, the COVID safety plans kind of sit next to or on top of the underlying school safety plans. Can I just get some clarity on how those two plans interact with each other?
Thank you, Director De La Cruz. I've actually asked that Mr. Mazera be brought over to be a part of the discussion so that we have continuity. And I will open it up to Mr. Shepherd, as well as Mr. Mazera, when he's brought over to make those comments.
Thank you.
Yes, as part of the, as part of the comprehensive school safety plan, adding a COVID, the COVID safety plan into that document is a new requirement. So it actually lives inside of that plan.
Great. And I think just, you know, with regards to the ways in which we can really bring community resources inside of our schools, like I know that there are excellent organizations, like the one that Director Manetti works for, that provide kind of suicide prevention services, and that have hotlines and warm bodies for people to reach out to in times of crisis. And I'm just wondering how we really build in that sense of, you know, bridges to community partnerships that bring some of those skill sets that have been really transformational in many communities throughout, throughout ours, our community. I said communities, like the LGBTQI community, the youth community, communities that have, have experienced underrepresentation and relative lack of safety during the pandemic due to just heightened concerns just generally. And so I think these are all conversations that I, I'm hearing really need to be continued, right? How are we building those, those systems right into place here in our schools? Director Mazera, thank you so much for, for coming on and talking about the, the COVID work on top of all of this. And I think just, if I could, yeah, you also addressing the ways in which we are, you know, what the status of our testing in, in our schools has been. Are there additional resources? Recognizing that the state has, has unlocked a lot of resources, but I think I'm also hearing that there's a relative lack of service providers to use those resources. So I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about the challenges and, you know, regular testing, asymptomatic testing available to our, to our district right now.
Sure will. So going backwards, the regular testing that we're currently doing, of course, is for asymptomatic at Lewis for anybody, free of charge, Monday through Thursday, 2:30 to 5:00. And that's where we have a lot of families that want to just be extra safe. And, you know, they're welcome to go there. We do that every day, every Monday through Thursday. In addition, in addition with our county partnership, we have symptomatic testing that they're doing at Lewis on Monday and Friday from 9:00 to 11:00. So those are the testing things we're doing. The only currently, the only kind of screening testing we're doing is through athletics, right? So we've been doing the wrestling and basketball programs. We go out weekly to them, and we're testing those because as, as part of the designation, there are some athletes that are, that are performing without masks in what's a dangerous, either, you know, physical situation, that's wrestlers, and now high school basketball, and so then we screen them weekly. In addition to that, we haven't set up the weekly screening of non-symptomatic students. We had kind of begun that process in September. As you adequately identified, we were beginning to identify a vendor and what that process would look like. There were concerns about doing that across our district, whether or not we would have enough staff from, from them, additional staff, without using our existing staff. And I think the issue had always been, our existing staff was not prepared to do symptomatic testing. It may be possible for asymptomatic testing, but the, the test, both the number of tests, if we were to do weekly testing of all 16,000 students, you know, the availability of the binocs test was in question back in September and October. I have not asked about the availability, and are they still having supply shortages around it? So I can't say that we could weekly screen 16,000 students. If you remember, at one point in our, in our conversation, Public Health kind of described, depending on the cases that we had, there may be a variable that we could look at screening. Maybe we did need to do weekly, but we could do monthly. And that would slow the rotation and the number of students down. And that was, of course, dependent on case, cases in the area. As we publish every week, you can see that we still have a low amount of COVID cases in our district. We publish every week, we publish the elementary school cases, the staff, middle and high. And we still remain in what the, the state calls a very low priority. We haven't jumped to that highest level, and we've remained pretty consistent with the safety standards. safety standards and things that we have currently. The last thing I think just to address is the overlay of the safety plan and the COVID plan. You know, I, I have to admit, I, we are focusing on the COVID thing and it is separate from drills, separate from active shooter of assemblies and classroom visits. And so I, I think if that's an area that we need to do better on, I will certainly work to take direction on that. You know, currently we are trying to keep our head above water with our, our, we're doing weekly testing of staff, as you know, with the current people that we have. And if that's an area that we need to improve on, we certainly take that feedback and work on a plan.
Thank you so much, Director Mazzara.
Of course.
Director Medina, do you have another comment?
I would just like to move approval of the elementary, middle and high schools' comprehensive school safety plans for the 2021, 2022 school year.
A second.
And before we take that vote, Director Beard had a comment and she put it into the chat. And I am going to read that to you. My audio is not working, but I would just like to add that as a student at Montgomery, we did have the student with the gun. There's a bit of comfort with the idea that there were SROs on campus. I know that that has been canceled, but this is just what I've heard from a lot of students. All right. So we had a, a motion made by Director Medina and second by, I think, Trustee Manieri. Let's take that vote, let's take that vote.
Director Beard. Thank you. Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you. That passes seven zero. We are moving on to action item three, E3, and that is, we're having a public hearing right now on the naming of the Caesar Chavez Language Academy. So the public hearing is now open on the naming of the Caesar Chavez Language Academy, and we could take public comment at two minutes each. Beth.
Thank you. So this public hearing, if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on the naming of Caesar Chavez Language Academy, now is the time to do so. Please raise your hand. And our first comment is Willow's, oh, not Willow, our first comment is Nick. And Nick, is this Nick Cast?
Yeah, Nick Caston, C-A-S-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I commented previously at the last meeting with this on the agenda, so I'll keep my comments short. I'm a parent at Caesar Chavez Language Academy. I was a member of the transition committee of Caesar Chavez with Cook Campus. And I'm just really glad that we're at this point and that this will continue on. I think the one thing that was missing most from the discussion at the last meeting was a discussion around the path that our teachers and community of the Caesar Chavez School has gone through since being placed at Comstock and then moved to Cook and never truly feeling like we have a home. And I think this action that you'll hopefully take here tonight will give us the ability to move forward. And I hope that all the teachers and family and the people that came before me and my son at the campus view this as really giving us a permanent community and a way to continue building the culture that we've built that's made it so that we have lotteries and more demand than we have spots for. So thank you for solving this and solidifying it and giving us the ground beneath our feet.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised for the public hearing.
All right, public hearing is now closed. We are moving on to item four, an action item. It's resolution number 2021 slash twenty-two dash twenty. It's the naming of the Caesar Chavez Language Academy campus. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Tronell.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. We bring forward to you tonight, following the public hearing, a resolution at the pleasure of the board for the naming, official naming of the Caesar Chavez Language Academy campus. But before I hand it back over to the board, I do have a friendly amendment. I appreciate feedback that we receive on agenda items. And I would like to turn your attention to the resolution itself. And I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully I can do that. I cannot. So what I do want to turn your attention to is the one, two, three, four, the fifth and last whereas in the resolution, the feeling of the language it currently reads, whereas the board upholds the recommendation through the work of the merger committee to name the campus Caesar Chavez Language Academy and. And after further feedback, the sentiment is that, that the actual name of Caesar Chavez Language Academy, while the work of the merger committee was happening, wasn't the direct recommendation of the merger committee was by, but was by additional community participation that the name was brought forward as an additional item of consideration. So therefore I would like to offer a friendly amendment that, that, that fifth whereas, whereas, excuse me, would read, whereas the board recognizes the official and unofficial school name recommendations provided through the work of the merger committee and community member participants and. And I can put that in the chat so that you can see it if you are a visual person. But that would be the friendly amendment that I would suggest to the overall resolution. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
So I'm going to ask you to say that one more time. Official, unofficial, something, something?
She put it in the chat for us.
Whereas the board recognizes the official and unofficial school name recommendations provided through the work of the merger committee and community member participants and.
So instead of upholds, is recognizes?
Yes.
Okay. Board questions? Trustee Medina.
Thank you. I would like to move that we approve resolution number 2021 slash twenty-two dash twenty with the recommended amendment to the fifth where as suggested by Superintendent Tronell, officially naming the Caesar Chavez Language Academy campus.
A second.
All right, moved by Trustee Medina, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. Any other discussion, board? See no hands, we can take that vote.
Director Beard. Director Medina.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. Thank you. And I will say, can I, can I what?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
What's the process for choosing the mascot? Is there, are they going to keep their mascot or is there going to be another process with the mascot?
Oh, my gosh, please don't ask that tonight. We're going to let them figure that out.
I have an answer, but I'll, I will yield to another opportunity for that opportunity.
Okay.
I want to appreciate and thank every single person who has worked on this for a very long time. And that includes everybody on this campus. That we honor the Cook legacy. And I think that we are going to be hearing that Cook name come back to us. We honor the, the staffs who have really worked hard to merge these campuses with all the growing pains that happens with this kind of thing. And we will continue to keep our eye out and hearts open to this incredible work. So thank you, everybody. Congratulations. All right, we are moving on now and we are now on E5. It's an action item. It's coming back to us tonight for a vote. The educator effectiveness block grant funds allocation for 2021, 22. Superintendent Tronell.
Thank you, Board President Fong. Yes, this is a two board meeting process. As you'll recall, at the November 10 meeting, we brought forward to you draft plans with allocations as placeholders with the understanding that we would continue to gain feedback from stakeholders as well as for the charter specifically, working with their teams to consider reallocating funds in the various of the 10 areas. So what you see here tonight presented is based on that additional feedback, taking into consideration collaboration and initial collaborative discussions with both labor groups as well as revisiting feedback that we have received from various surveys. We bring forward to you tonight updated plans with the understanding that these plans are very flexible. So therefore we will continue to monitor need and adjust accordingly while it is not necessary at each adjustment that we bring these forward for board approval first. We will continue to update the board on the actions that we take. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
And board questions on this?
I just have a quick question. I can't find the center as a high school attachment. I know in the summary, the expectation, I mean, we're, we're going to spend 2.2 million. But in the attachments, I mean, I might missing it. I just couldn't find it.
The, what you're, what you'll be looking for is the general Santa Rosa City Schools plan, which combines elementary and secondary. So it's a district-wide plan and then the four charters.
Yeah, that one has a total of 3.1, which is a total that you get, that it's on the, on the summary, right? But in the summary, you also have Santa Rosa High by itself. And I, I just couldn't find it in the attachment. So, and maybe I should have brought this up.
That is not Santa Rosa High School. That is Santa Rosa High, the district.
District, got it. All right, that's what.
The question.
Right.
I see no other board member hands up. So we are going to open this to public hearing. Public comment. Public comment.
Thank you. So, public comment for item E5, educator effectiveness block grant funds allocation. If you'd like to comment on this or a member of the public, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Any other discussion, board? All right, so we can entertain the motion to approve this. Director Medina.
I'll move to approve the educator effectiveness funds plans for the 2021 to 2026 school years.
All right, so that was moved by Omar Medina. And seconded, I think I heard more loudly a Director Sheffield's voice. And we can take a vote now.
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. I think that this is a great thing for our district and Superintendent Jurnell, as you work through it with our staff, that it continued to be beneficial to all of us and kind of bring us all the way to 2026. That's, that's a while with a lot of things to do and hopefully we're going to get to spend some energy on math that we need to discuss further. Okay. We're on item E6 is an action item. It's an approval of a memorandum of understanding reached with the Santa Rosa City Schools and the Santa Rosa Teachers Association regarding mandatory trainings. All those really great trainings that we get to do every year.
Yes. With that, Board President Fong, I will hand this immediately over to Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you, Superintendent Tronell, Board President Fong, members of the board and staff and community. We have reached agreement with SRTA. We worked collaboratively on this issue. As you well know, we have mandated trainings that over the years have increased. We, it started with mandated reporting and then, you know, these are very important trainings and our desire was to come together to, over the years, we've had various ways these trainings were completed. Some, you know, during staff meeting time, during other various things. So we wanted to consolidate it, have a time for staff and we, we settled on the, the principal-directed teacher workday before the start of school and before the first instructional day. So this will, this MOU provides three hours of dedicated time for staff members to complete these required trainings. And so with that, I will entertain any questions you have.
Okay, board? No questions? See no hands? We're going to open this to public comment.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E6, please raise your hand now. And Lynette would like to comment. Lynette, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, hi, this is Lynette.
I'm sorry?
Lynette Casey.
Thank you, Lynette.
Sure. I just want to ask, is it for all, all staff members classified as well?
Usually public comment, Lynette, is not a question and answer. Did you have a comment?
No, I guess it was a question comment.
Thank you very much. And there are no other hands raised.
This is for Ms. Casey. It is, it was a MOU with a Santa Rosa Teachers Association. Board, any other discussion? Call for the motion.
I'd like to move that we approve, the approval of the memorandum of understanding reached with Santa Rosa City Schools and Santa Rosa Teachers Association regarding mandatory trainings.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Clerk Flores. And we can take that vote, Medina.
Director Beard. Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you very much to all who participated in that MOU to work it out. And we are moving on to our final discussion action item tonight. It's a discussion items number seven. We were on E7. And this is the requirement to conduct assessment of trustee area map using 2020 census data and next steps. It's kind of an announcement, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. I'm actually going to read the background because I think it's really essential for this requirement and it helps to explain why we're bringing it forward tonight. So in 2018, the Santa Rosa City School District transitioned to a by trustee area election system to ensure compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. Following each federal census, school districts that have transitioned to by trustee area election systems are required to review their existing trustee area maps. using the new census data per Ed Code Section 5019.5, Section A. In late September 2021, following a delay due to the COVID-19, this 2020 census data was approved and released by the California Department of Finance. Since the district is in a bi-trusty area election system, it is required to conduct an assessment of its existing trustee area maps using the 2020 census data to ensure population balance. If the population remains balanced, then the board can designate the existing map as the district's trustee area map, moving forward, beginning with the 2022 elections. If the population is no longer balanced, then the board must make adjustments to the boundaries of the existing trustee area map to achieve the required population balance. The process of conducting an assessment and making any necessary adjustments to the map must be completed by March 1, 2022, per Ed Code 5019.5. So what we are doing tonight is alerting the board that this work is underway, and we do plan to bring forward information to the board at a January board meeting. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
Thank you. Um, board members' questions? And I see one question from Trustee Manieri.
Thank you. My question is, so I heard you say, Superintendent Trinell, that we will be seeing this again in January. So is that, are we expecting to see an assessment already completed by January? Like, what the outcomes of that assessment will be?
Thank you for the question. I would like to welcome Mr. Edson to assist with that response.
Sure. Good evening. Board of Education, Superintendent Trinell, President Fong. Yeah, currently, right now, there is work being done on that assessment with a demographer through legal counsel. At the January meeting, we will be bringing back the results of that assessment, along with proposals if changes need to be made for, for initial discussion. Then we'll subsequently be brought back based on feedback and the actual results of the assessment.
Are there any requirements to this process that include community input or community engagement to help us determine what proposed boundary changes might look like?
I don't know if there is the requirement. I will find out for sure, but that would be part of the discussion. If it is determined that boundaries do need to be changed because of the shift of population or demographics.
So then after January, we'll have, well, this has to be done by March. So after January, what do we expect our timeline thereafter to look like?
Depending on what comes back from the assessments, it could be something at each board meeting, the two board meetings in January, as well as the two board meetings in February, depending on what the assessment shows, and if there needs to be changes.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Medina.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we, since this is, I think, our first time going over it since we actually became districts. It's the first census that we've had. I'm curious if we've looked at what other districts that go through this process do in terms of community engagement, community.
Yeah, that is something certainly being discussed with, with legal counsel. Fortunately, if you will, they're doing this with many school districts right now, most of, for the first time, because of CDRA. So we'll be able to, to gain information from them for discussion.
Seeing no other hands up from board members, we are going to open this up for public comment.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E7, please raise your hands at this time. And Deanna Oliveras would like to comment.
Hi, I know you guys can't answer my question, but I, I'm kind of, I think that a lot of parents may be confused about this agenda item, and if it is linked, or if it's a separate issue, than the Sonoma County redistricting that's happening right now. So I'm just wondering, you know, I, like I said, I know you can't answer, but I'm just wondering if there is any transparency, because there's not a lot of information on the agenda item you guys have. A lot of parents don't really understand what this means, and sometimes I don't think you take it a second step to maybe try to explain it to parents that are confused by it. So then again, it makes us, it makes it hard for some parents to ask questions about it. And like, even on the website, and I don't see, like, even in Spanish, maybe it is, but I just feel like there's a lot of stakeholders that don't really understand what's happening, and then it's brought on the agenda, and then you guys make a decision, and you don't really get stakeholders' input all the way. And I know Stephanie and Ed are both on that committee. Ed's the chairman of the Sonoma County Advisory Redistricting Commission. And so I just wonder if there's a conflict of interest, or if that's the same entity or different ones, and if they will, if it becomes a situation where you have to vote on if they will abstain from the voting, because I think that it's not very transparent, and it looks very alarming to some parents. So, thank you.
Thank you. And President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Um, Board, any other discussion? Deputy Superintendent Edson, any other comments?
Sorry. Director Manieri has her hand up.
Sorry, Stephanie.
That's okay. I know technically we're not supposed to respond to that, but I really do appreciate the call for understanding this process. And I would just like to clarify that though Director Sheffield and I were a part of that commission for the county, that commission is now dissolved, and that process has ended. So I just wanted to, to clarify that. That is not, there is no intersection in timeline with those two processes. And, and actually, and I had something to say before that, too, that if, if we do, or when we make efforts to engage with the community, just kind of coming from my experience on, on the county's commission, I just want to make sure that, that that process is done thoughtfully and meaningfully. And, you know, two months between January, when we are expecting to receive kind of the first set of information on this process, and, and then the end of, or the, the beginning of March, March 1, when this is supposed to be completed, this is a really short timeline. And I just want to kind of call that out, so that when, you know, if we're feeling rushed in the process, or it just feels like there isn't a lot of time, it's because it's not, and I know that a lot of it is outside of our control with the census information coming out a bit late, but just wanted to, to, to say that, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of time, and we need to take that into consideration.
I think President Fong might be frozen, so I'm going to call on Director De La Cruz.
Thank you, Director Manieri, for raising those issues. I think it's also important for us to pick up the thread of the last time our district talked about our boundaries, and some of the efforts that we were trying to make to desegregate our schools. And that was one of the efforts. So I think just connecting some of those dots and giving folks a timeline that shows the ways in which we've been thinking, you know, about the ways in which our institution functions within a structural, within structural challenges throughout our community is going to be important for folks to just have that context in the way that we, you know, we've worked to really understand how best to address some of the, you know, the desegregation efforts that I know we've been, we've been driving at. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of redistricting is really this question around representation, and around, you know, equity and representation, and making sure that folks who have, you know, generationally experienced under service as a result of their underrepresentation in, in seats of, of power and authority have the opportunity to really weigh in on the ways in which we're drawing our boundaries. And so, you know, just, just to echo Director Manieri's, like, points here, I do think it's going to be really important to bring our community along in this process, and, and to be as transparent as possible, especially during, during a tough time for people to really want to be engaged in, you know, technical bureaucratic work that also is really important, and, and does, does underscore the importance of, of an engaged citizenry. And I use the word citizenry, like, in, in the sense of, like, folks who are here in our district, not just folks who have the ability to vote. So any ways in which we can really help to do that. Superintendent Trinell, I just want you to know that it sounds like you, we definitely have folks who are experienced in this work, and who have just been through a process in which we've learned a lot about how to behave as leaders, and how to run a process that is reflective of the needs of our community as we listen and, and make sure that people's questions are addressed in, in a way that's transparent and, and open, and, and that, you know, really helps to develop that shared understanding of the importance of this work. So I'm super grateful for this update, you know, being brought with a little bit of time. But, you know, to make sure that we make the most of it is going to be really, really important. So if, if you need any support, and, you know, from, from board members and helping to draft and share ideas around how to message some of this important work, and how to connect the dots between some of our past work, I would love to help. And I think, like I said, we have folks who have deep experience and, and, and a difference that will surely bring, you know, they can bring.
Thank you. And Deputy Superintendent Edson, I believe you have an invitation.
Yeah, if we could bring over Milton Foster, please. Our legal counsel was in other meetings and was able to just momentarily pop into our meeting. So I'm asking to bring him over. He will be available to talk about the process and answer any questions that you may have. So as he's, I see him popping on now, so we'll give him just a second.
I think Ever has his hand up.
And there is Milton Foster joining us.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
Excuse my delay, as Rick was saying, I'm juggling multiple board meetings because the, many districts are going through this all at the same time. I do have, if we have the time, a brief kind of PowerPoint presentation that I can share, if we have the time. Do we have the time, I should ask?
We do.
Okay. All right, so let me go ahead and share that. Okay, can you all see?
Yes.
All right. Hold on just a second. All right, so we're here to talk about, of course, the process that the district has to undergo that was initiated due to the release of the 2020 census. So just kind of a brief recap, the district underwent a transition from at-large to bi-trusty areas in 2017, if my memory serves me correctly. Just as a recap, bi-trusty areas is where the school district is divided up into trustee areas, in this instance, seven, and governing board members elected from each trustee area, and only the members of that area can vote for the trustee in that area. So we're here now because there is a requirement under CDRA and Education Code 5019.5 that for all trustee area election systems, following the release of a federal census, the governing board must do an assessment to determine if the population in each area, in the trustee area map across the board is still balanced. And we do that by way of a demographer. And so we are working with a demographer who is in the process of completing that process. So I'm going to walk you through just kind of different, the different scenarios that could happen, depending on how the assessment goes. All right, so the requirement is that the population, the variance must be in compliance, meaning 10% must be a 10% variance between the seven trustee areas. When we say variance, what we mean is what we do is we take the 2020 census, divide up the total population within the district, you come to an average of how many people need to be within the seven trustee areas. Then you look at the existing map, and based upon the number of people in each area, you calculate how, how much over the average that each area is, or how much under the average that each area is. And what you're looking for is the, between the largest trustee area, which is above the average, and the lowest trustee area, which is beneath the average. Between those two, you can have more than a 10% variance between the two. Okay? So there's two different paths. If the demographer conducts the assessment and determines that the population is balanced using the existing map with the new numbers, because realize the existing map was initially drawn using the 2010 census. If they do the analysis and determine that the existing map with the 2020 census is still in compliance, meaning the variance is within the 10% from the largest trustee area to the smallest one, and it's compared to the average. Then no change to the trustee area map is necessarily needed. Because that's what this process is meant to do. It's meant to ensure population compliance as compared to the original process, which is meant to transition from at-large to bi-trusty areas. So in the event that the population is balanced, then the board could certainly elect to essentially pass a resolution redesignating the existing map to be the trustee area map and plan moving forward until such time as the next census, which of course would be 2030. Okay? Now, if the demographer does the assessment and determines that the district's trustee areas are out of compliance, meaning no longer balanced, and using the terms I've been using, meaning that the variance is greater than 10%, 15%, 12%, 25%, because of the changes in population throughout the district. If that is the determination, then that will trigger a different path in which the board must adjust the boundaries in order to get the map back into compliance, meaning the 10% or below variance. So that is what the demographer is presently doing, and we will know later on this month whether or not the assessment will be completed, we'll know whether or not the district's present map as constructed is in compliance. If it's not in compliance, then what would have to happen is the demographer would then take the next step to prepare draft map options to present to the board for the board's review. Would also, we would also do a, a, a public hearing to also allow community input, and the board would consider the options that the demographer comes up with. Of course, the, the board has input and can certainly comment and recommend or advise as to different changes or iterations of the maps. But essentially, the demographer would take a first stab, and his, his, his task would first initially just be about rebalancing the population, ensuring, and ensuring that we maintain the 10% variance. That is what the initial options would look like. We will present those to the board. That would be, I guess, your January meeting, and get comments, feedback. Uh, and get comments, feedback, uh, and then the board could determine if they wanted, uh, different looks of maps or if those maps were sufficient. And then ultimately, the end of the process would, uh, conclude with the board selecting a map. Uh, the, the, the options of the maps, of course, would all have variances that are less than 10%. And again, this process must be completed, uh, before March 1st, 2022. Now importantly, this process is different, uh, in many respects from the initial process. Uh, the initial process had a number of numerous community meetings, uh, public hearings that were all legally required. Uh, that is not the requirement of this process that we're undertaking now. It is a much more reduced process, uh, and typically contemplates a lot less meetings. In fact, you know, usually maybe only several meetings, uh, and public hearings. Simply because the, uh, the emphasis is not on completely redrawing the maps, but on rebalancing the population with the existing map. If that makes sense. So, uh, as far as our next steps, of course, today I'm giving my brief presentation. The next time, uh, I see you, which will be in January, the demographer will have completed, uh, his assessment. And depending upon whether or not the district is out of compliance, uh, if, if the district's map is out of compliance, then when we come back in January, I will likely also be presenting you with initial, uh, draft maps options for you to just review. And those again will just be based upon his initial emphasis of balancing the population. And so when we come back in January, I will be giving an update on, hey, we, if we were out of compliance, uh, here are additional maps. If we are in compliance, then, uh, I would give that review as well. And then, uh, be asking the board as far as direction in terms of whether or not the board wants to just redesignate the existing map as the board's trustee area map moving forward. Okay. So that would happen in January, uh, and then, uh, depending on how many meetings you have in January, uh, between January and February, in the event that we had to select or adjust a new map, that is when that process will be completed. Uh, all of the steps must be completed, uh, in, uh, in advance of the February 28th, 2022 timeframe. Okay. So that's, that ends my sort of brief presentation. And, uh, at this time I'll take any questions from the board if there are any.
So that gives us four board meetings. Um, uh, Clerk Flores had a question.
Yeah, thank you, President Fong. So I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because I did let the district know back in October 2nd about the urgency of making sure we did this because, uh, you know, there, there's seven of us and, you know, uh, the democratic process is, it's a bit messy as we have seen at the, at the account level. So I'm just, I just want to reiterate that, uh, we're pressed with time at this, at this juncture. And I, and I feel like, uh, I just don't want to be pressured to go into something that, you know, it's hap- hazardly made. Uh, having said that, I appreciate your presentation because it gave me a, a, a sense to what it is that we're looking for. We're not redrawing the, uh, boundaries. We're not redrawing the entire map. We're just making sure that we are within the variance of 10%. Uh, but at the same time, I just want to reiterate what both, uh, Director Manieri and Allegre de la Cruz mentioned that we, um, we should have, um, started this process a, a while back. In, 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 in a case that, that we find an excess of a variance, um, with your experience, uh, Milton, uh, how long does it usually take, uh, i- if we, you know, if we see really lopsided sort of, you know, districts? Uh, let's say a district has ha- has grown, you know, exponentially, and then there's a district that has shrunk exponentially. Uh, what will that take in terms of redrawing the maps and, and making sure that they're balanced?
Uh, that process, uh, does not take a significant amount of time. I've honestly, the longest process is the assessment. And I can tell you, kind of going back to your comment, uh, the process was started. But what, because, uh, just to kind of set the background here, all of the districts and not just school districts, but all public entities, uh, who went to by trustee areas are all undergoing this same process. Uh, and the census was basically released, uh, uh, al- almost at October, uh, of this past year. And essentially there are only a handful of demographers unfortunately that do this type of work. And so, uh, they have been kind of literally, uh, they have, each of them has hundreds and hundreds of clients that they're all doing this for. Uh, and everyone unfortunately is kind of jammed up that we really put everyone back when the census was not released last March. And instead was released in the end of September. But in terms of the timeframe of how to, uh, quickly get maps together, that is not a, uh, long process at all, especially because they're going with the existing maps. And they, the iterations initially that they're taking is simply imbalancing the population. They're looking at those areas where, as you put it, there was significant population growth and redis- redistributing, uh, the population in the adjacent areas. And their basis is to have the map look close as possible to what it looks like right now with changes, of course, along the borders because they have to exchange population between areas that have decreased and areas that have increased. So, uh, once the assessment is completed, which we should, uh, have, uh, shortly, then the maps, I expect to have maps as well, uh, by the end of this month. In the event that the assessment demonstrates, we, uh, we are out of compliance. So, um, in terms of, I also address your concern that will be kind of jammed up. Uh, there is the ability, of course, uh, to have special, um, uh, board meetings if necessary. Uh, if we find that the board, uh, would like multiple additional iterations of the proposed maps, uh, we certainly can make that accommodation and, uh, uh, look that route if necessary. Uh, but I will make sure that your meeting in January, you will have multiple different looks. And, uh, uh, you know, so that you can consider, and then we can quickly, uh, make any changes or suggestions or that we can need to incorporate in order to make sure we complete this in a timely fashion and not feel like the board did not have sufficient time to provide the input that it wanted.
Thank you. And I appreciate your thorough answer. And, uh, my next question, you did answer, but I just wanted to say for the record was, I was going to ask the district to give us an idea as to why, uh, it, um, why it, it, why the delay? And, and I appreciate that you were able to answer the, that question, uh, that the, there was a shortage in the demographers. Uh, thank you. And those are all the questions I have. Thank you, Milton.
Okay. So let's see, uh, Director Medina and then Director Manieri.
Thank you. Um, so just my quick question is, uh, first, uh, in terms of the assessment from the population, does it look at it by, or in terms of the borders right now, is it by precinct, by census tract? Do, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, it's by census blocks. The census, uh, data is given to the demographer. And they have, um, uh, technology and computer programs that breaks the data down into census blocks. And they have to overlay the census blocks onto the existing map. Uh, and then they use the census blocks with the new population, uh, using the existing map and then decide based off where the lines are drawn now, uh, whether or not the areas are out of compliance or within that 10% variance.
And the second question on, in terms of this timeline, it says options posted on district website. Is that assuming that there's, uh, a variance above 10%? And, and, and are those options prior 24th meeting or any board review or?
Yes. So, uh, that is assuming in any event that, uh, we do have a variance beyond 10% and the district must make a change, then the new proposed adjusted maps, uh, in advance of the board meeting would be posted on the district website. Uh, and we would have the notice of public hearing that would allow the board and the community an opportunity to look at the maps in advance of the meeting so that, uh, everyone could come prepared to discuss uh, the maps themselves. Uh, we would also give a presentation at that meeting just elaborating, hey, here is the census data you see here is out of compliance. Uh, as a result, we had to draw new maps. These are the new maps. And going over the, uh, the differences and where the, uh, changes in the borders were due to the population, that is what would take place at that board meeting. But in advance of that, we would provide the maps and coordinate with district administration. I would send them to Rick and they would be posted in advance of the meeting.
And the only other thing, because I don't think I saw this attached to the agenda, um, can we make sure to get a copy of this presentation so that it can be attached for the minutes?
Sure. Yes.
And, uh, Director Manieri and then Director De La Cruz.
Yeah, um, thank you, Milton, for the presentation. Um, I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to how demographers might go about adjusting boundaries if that is necessary. Um, like, you know, I just, I kind of think about like a boundary and think about, you know, you can take some from here and some from here and some from here. So like, how are those decisions made? How does a demographer just make those decisions?
So one of the things that he is keeping intact is the, uh, the initial trustee area map that was approved and adopted. So he's looking at that. The other thing that he is looking at is making sure, uh, when he is redrawing or adjusting the boundaries. And if you'll notice, even the language is diff- different. They call it adjusting the boundaries because the concept is to keep the map the same and making minor adjustments to deal with the population. But one of the things he is keeping in play is he's still, uh, keeping the federal and California voting rights principles in play. Meaning that he, any adjustments he makes, he is being mindful of not decreasing significantly the power of any specific minority group. Uh, he's trying to maintain the, the, um, the integrity and purpose of the initial map while also meeting the new requirement of rebalancing the population. So typically what they will do is they will first look at all the trustee areas. And then it may not be all the trustee areas that need to be adjusted. There may be a trustee area that has decreased because of population, uh, outfluct and one that has increased. And if that's the case, and they're right next to each other, and there can be a very quick and, uh, you know, straightforward exchange, then they will go to the border. And then they will look at the border and simply try to, uh, exchange the population between the two while maintaining the integrity of the rest of the map everywhere else. So usually when you see the changes, uh, it will be, okay, we had to change this map in the southwest corner here, and we, it did a small exchange here between areas two and three. And then we did another subsequent change between exit areas five and six up at the northeast corner. And then everything else, you know, between the area, all the other areas, uh, have been maintained, uh, intact. And of course, that depends upon the variance. Uh, sometimes, you know, we get a variance that is slightly over per se, you know, 12%, 15%, which is not much, then there won't be very significant changes. If you happen to see a variance where now we are at, for whatever reason, you know, 30%, well then that would require a more, a little bit more of a drastic change because you have a severe imbalance. And so if you have a variance that high, then you would see necessarily more significant changes. Uh, though there's a usually kept to the, uh, outskirts and the boundaries. And really their task is to find those gathered very large areas of population and rebalance those. So those are the principles that they use while keeping in mind the original map, which, uh, and the original principles which had, you know, there was an emphasis on making sure so many school districts and school attendance boundaries were going across multiple areas. All of those principles, uh, would be observed. It would solely be about trying to rebalance the population in the, um, you know, as least in truth of matter as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I don't have any other questions, but since we're in discussion, I do want to say, um, just from the experience, I, I just had that, um, that there are different ways, like that piece right there, that like part about, um, looking at the borders and, and making decisions about where we, we place, um, individuals to, to balance out map and how we make those adjustments there. I just, that, that part is the part that needs to be really transparent. Uh, a- and that is the part that we really need to have community input for. Um, and so I, I just want to name that and, um, and I just, I don't feel comfortable with our board. Like, I, I know that we, we are going to post it on the website and there will be public hearings. But I, I don't feel entirely comfortable with our board, um, having these big conversations about these adjustments if their adjustments are necessary. Um, and not really bringing in the community in a meaningful way in, into our process. Um, I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. So I'm, um, maybe this is more of just like a, a, a thought for our administration. Like, how can we start to plan for the events that we need to make adjustments now? Um, how can we start to plan for that now so that we, we have a plan for engaging community in that process? Um, again, I just, I don't feel comfortable with our board with just having these couple of instances where the public can make, um, can, can provide us with their input and, and the majority of that just work being just held with this board.
All right. Thank you, Director. Um, Director Taylor Cruz.
Thank you, President Fong. Thank you, Milton, for this amazing presentation. A couple of questions that I had is, you know, uh, w- we are a community that has been fraught with disaster, with natural disasters and then with, you know, two years of pandemic. I know that we rely on census data to really understand, you know, at the census block level, the changes in our population geographically. But what, what are, what are typical ways in which, um, you know, population centers would shift dramatically? And do you see any of those things having happened in our community?
Well, typically, uh, what you've seen oftentimes in, in the 10 years, because the census is every 10 years, is if you have had, um, for example, large, uh, co- new communities, new housing communities or apartment communities that have been built in the past 10 years in any particular location. That is where you would potentially see there was vacant land there. And now we've seen, you know, uh, two, three thousand homes built in this area. And all of those are new people that are now being counted by the new census in that area. That's usually, uh, what you will see, uh, that causes the, the, uh, the variance to increase and the distinction. The other thing that sometimes you will see if diff- is just, uh, if you've noticed a decrease uh, in the population. And I bring that up for you all, um, because I don't have any specific knowledge. But because of the fires, for example, if you, if the district suffered a decrease in population from residents who moved out of the area or had to make other living arrangements and then had not returned. So I don't know if that's the case or not, but that could be an, uh, another instance where you had population there in the 2010 census. And now you have a, uh, decrease of, because of that, you know, natural disaster that occurred. But typically you're looking at housing booms, new development booms. Those are the drivers, uh, uh, that have, you know, cha- or caused the variance and then have necessitated a, an adjustment to the balance.
Yep. I, I, I can say with some, um, security that building large amounts of housing in our community is not something that has happened. Um, but I do think that, you know, um, the impacts of the fires will be interesting for us to be able to look at. Um, while the impact, the actual kind of physical impact in our community was largely outside of our district. Um, for the 2017 fires, we definitely had impacts within our district, um, our high school district in particular, our high school areas. Um, in 2019 to 2020. Um, so, you know, Stephanie, I really, I really appreciate you making sure that we are being creative and thinking now about the ways in which we engage our community. Um, Milton, could you give us an, an update in terms of, um, you know, ways in which you've seen other jurisdictions kind of just kill it when it comes to community engagement and sharing information? Like where, where have you seen best practices and, and what are those best practices? What, what do they look like? What do they feel like?
Sure. So I, I can tell you, the first time we went through this, because I was the one that assisted the district with the initial transition. Santa Rosa did a very great job of getting out the word and the way in which we, the district did that was by public hearings. You know, sending out public hearings, putting notices in the paper, ads for the public hearings, having a, a presence on the district's website. So that, you know, there was, you know, an, an ability for people to easily go to the district's website and to see the maps there and to view them. There was also the ability to have electronic communications and feedback directly with the district. There was, if I'm not mistaken, a designated email or designated contact where people could communicate electronically so that communications were not limited to simply the public hearings, but there was the ability to have that dialogue on an ongoing basis. We also, last time if I remember, the district sent out, I believe, letters home to, through students in both English and Spanish notifying the, the parents and community members of the upcoming public hearings in order to encourage participation. So, so those are some of the methods that we used last time, and there was a fair amount of participation by the district community, more so than, than other districts. And I've, I've done this, you know, numerous times with other districts as well. Santa Rosa had a fair amount of people who participated. So those are some of the examples of the outreach efforts that the district did that are effective and that many other districts have used in order to outreach and encourage a participation of the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I, I do think that one of the things that we have the benefit of in our district is a very active D-LAC. Thank you so much to the, you know, the leadership of Senor Juarez, who we heard from earlier tonight, and from all the parents who really engage around, you know, issues that face the English language learner community. And just to, just to note, right, we now have the 2020 census data public. And for folks who want to go take a peek at what the county looks like, the county's redistricting website actually has a lot of that information up and accessible. And I will just say, right, some of the things that we can think about in terms of, you know, the languages that are spoken in Santa Rosa include like English, Spanish, Chinese, Tagalog, Ilocano, Vietnamese, Lao, or other Huaheli, German, and right, like, we have a of, oops, am I frozen?
Yeah, you are.
So there's, there's lots of information of us. All, all of it is in the way in which we engage them. So grateful for your work, Milton. Thank you.
All right.
All right. So we're going to hear from, we'll hear from Omar, who's got his hand up for a while, and then we'll hear from Director Sheffield.
Thank you. So I just wanted to touch base on the, well, first off, I think 2010 to 2020, I think there's been a lot of change in our community. I anticipate there, there might be significant changes. But I did see, I believe it was on the last section of your presentation that it says, even if there's not a 10% variance, we could choose to adjust the boundaries as long as they're within the population. I ask because some of the sections, I think particularly to my district, seem like there's in some interesting lines in terms of how those borders were decided. But is that correct?
Yes, that is true. I will say though that I just have to say that there is a difference between the these two processes, meaning the initial process to draw the map and then the adjustment of the boundaries. What I mean by that is if there is a significant change in the boundaries, then there is the ability of someone to say, look, you are now essentially sort of overhauling the initial trustee area map. And there is an argument that you are going beyond what is, what is required. And then you are, you are going back over into the initial process, which was much more rigorous, had much more, you know, requirements and steps. For example, in this process here, the adjustment process, it does not go before the county committee for approval. Right? And the idea is because it is simply supposed to be a boundary adjustment that they didn't feel the need to have that amount of oversight and approval needed by the county. This is completely a board-controlled decision. The other, the initial transition, some of you may know or remember that it had so many public hearings that were required. It had oversight by the county committee. There was just a lot more structure and a lot more requirements because the overhaul and the change to the district was so substantial. And so as we're going through this process, in the event that boundary adjustments need to happen, we have to be mindful of staying sort of within the framework that is contemplated as opposed to a complete redraw or significant changes to the original map.
Yes, I think maintaining kind of the general districts as they are is kind of the main focus around that. I think the, the only thing, other thing that I'd like to ask, and this is both to trustee Manieri and Sheffield, maybe given from your experience, if you have any suggestions to community outreach or, or how we can engage community best within the timeline that we have. If maybe, you know, could like come up with some proposal for us or ask staff to help with something like that, that draws from your experience, given the process you went through. I know, I'd appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Director Sheffield.
Yeah, you know, I think that there, there is a lot that, that Director Manieri and I can, can share from the experience that we just had at the county. There are some parallels, but you know, the process that we're about to undertake is significantly different, and the public should know that as well from what the county just did. But I, you know, I think it would be helpful as we go into our meetings in, in, in the weeks ahead, is just at every opportunity to make sure that the, the school community, the public who's following along has complete clarification throughout the process. I mean, that includes definitions. You know, I was looking at some comments thi- this evening on this process. And we just have to be really clear, clear, because the, the, the public might not have the insight that, that we have or that we will have as we go through this process. And just to be patient, terms are used throughout the redistricting process, like gerrymandering. And we just have to have a clear definition of what, you know, so the public knows what gerrymandering is. Knowing that, you know, things that look a little bit odd or a little bit strange, it's because of a census tract. And that's something that we don't have a whole lot, we don't have any control over how you capture a certain population. So something that might look a little funny, it looks a little funny because there's only so many people that live in that population. And if you're trying to capture that, you don't have control over how you do that. There are things, you know, little things that, that might not make a lot of sense right now, but as we're doing the process, we have Milton on board to help us with clarification so the public gets an understanding. And then the question that I had for you, Milton, was who's the demographer?
Oh, we have our demographer with Cooperative Strategies. It's, uh, it's not Larry, the demographer anymore. Larry has, uh, moved on, but it is Larry's company, Cooperative Strategies, who, uh, who is still servicing the district in his fashion and, and conducting the, uh, doing the assessment. And if necessary, will be assisting with the boundary adjustment.
Great. And for, for colleagues on the board, we have good relationship with these guys. So this, this is a, a good one-two punch that we have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Director Sheffield. And I see no other hands up. Milton, thank you so much. Any other comments, Superintendent Tronell or Deputy Superintendent Edson?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Foster, for joining us this evening and providing that additional information. Thank you to Mr. Edson for assisting and addressing the agenda item. And it's very clear that we have our work set forward for what we need to do. So thank you so much.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, you all have a great evening.
You as well.
Right.
We are now moving on to consent items, and we're, I'm looking for approval of consent items. Two through six.
We'll approve items F2 through F6.
Second.
Okay, so that was motion by Director Medina and seconded by Clerk Flores.
Is Director Beard still present? Director Beard.
Hi, I'm first. The connection that's been turned off my camera.
Thank you. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you so much. We are moving to approval of the minutes as item G1 of the regular board meeting held on November 10th, 2021.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on November 10th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. That was motion by Obermanna Medina and seconded by Jill McCormick.
Director Beard.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you. Are there any board member requests for information tonight? Okay, seeing no hands, if I missed anybody, speak up. I do have one request for information, and Superintendent Tronell, you may already be bringing it to us, but I want to make sure that we are going to get math data for the first semester of the school year. And that would be the math data that would include everything that you think would be informative to us, of course, including students who have taken integrated one more than once. And also by demographics, as we generally ask for.
And can I just add to that, President Fong, that I would really love for us to also hear about what supports are in place? And what support, what additional supports may be needed as identified by math teachers?
An idea I also have, Superintendent, is, and just an idea. We have been really, we have centered student voice in this, and I don't know when might be a good time, of course, anytime could be a good time, but I'd like to get data. I'd like to hear what students say about math. I'd like to hear what students say about their math courses, about how they understand math, and what supports they are looking for or what they're getting that are effective. I guess in a nutshell, student voice on, on math classes, on, on math education.
I have something on the topic.
Yes, kind of barely, Georgia.
I'll put this in the chat.
Okay, so do that right away. We will wait for you. Board, any other requests for information? Okay, let's see what George is asking for. George, I take it you are typing in the chat right now?
Yes. This is in regards to, um,
Okay, we did not understand that.
She said this is in regards to math classes.
Okay, so I'm going to read it out loud. Basically, the students in international baccalaureate higher level classes that are only at Montgomery are pretty behind in math in my grade. She's a senior that I'm aware of. Distance learning covered only the necessities for the IB tests, and now a lot are struggling to learn new concepts really quickly. All right, thank you for that comment. All right. Superintendent Tronell, are there, and is there anything else for the good of the order tonight?
Thank you for all of the diligence this evening. Certainly some really good work ahead for us as we think about safety, as we think about engaging our community, as we think about student achievement.
All right, so we will see each other at the, at the special board meeting on December 15th for the reorganization of the board, and I think maybe another thing or two. Don't know, can't remember. And let's point out it is 9:30 PM. I call the meeting closed. Thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.